All right, I'll call the meeting to order for November 26, 2018, the City of Pacifica City Council. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Councilmember DeGree.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Valterlos.
Here.
Mayor Keener.
Here.
Okay, now we'll have the salute to the flag led by myself.
It's to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and a God, indivisible, with the great King and just as for all.
And city attorney, do we have a closed session report?
No reportable action.
Okay, thank you. We have two special presentations. The first one is from the San Mateo County Libraries, their annual report by Julie Finklang.
Good evening, Mayor Keener and members of the city council. I am pleased to present the library's annual report for the fiscal year 2017-18. There we go. First, I'm going to give you a little background on the San Mateo County Library System. It was first established as a county-free library in 1912, and the Library Joint Powers Authority was formed in 1999, which currently governs the library system. The service area of the San Mateo County Libraries is comprised of our 11-member cities as well as the unincorporated areas of the county, which cover 351 square miles. Approximately 283,000 people live within our service area, and 67% of the population have library cards. Each of our 12 libraries is part of a larger family offering transformative experiences in a single mission: to strengthen our community by creating an inclusive sense of place and environment for learning. We evaluate a variety of data to assess performance and rely on benchmarking to compare our results to the rest of the field. Compared to other public libraries in the nation, the San Mateo County Libraries is a highly performing organization. We see higher use per capita in every category, including four times the number of program attendees that our comparative peer libraries do. Here in Pacifica, the libraries are a place where people gather to enjoy community events, such as the popular weekly musical Storytime. The Pacifica Library statistics show that we have approximately 229,000 circulation last year, almost 150,000 visitors, and over 25,000 people attended our programs. We're particularly proud of this last statistic because it increased nearly 50% over the last fiscal year due to the dedication of library staff to providing programming that resonates with the community. This year, we developed and led a county pilot program designed to improve employee performance. We designed and implemented an evidence-based performance management system that replaced traditional performance reviews with weekly check-ins and pulse surveys to accelerate employee development and performance. Pictured, we see two employee engagement events that took place in Pacifica last year. The first is the Halloween costume contest, and I want to note that Sharon Hagberg won third place throughout the whole library system for her Cruella de Vil costume, which you see on the left. And then, the picture on the bottom is the Pacifica Library staff had a team-building event where we went to Half Moon Bay, and we had a scavenger hunt, and had lunch, and a tour of the new Half Moon Bay Library, which I'll talk more about in a minute. And that was sponsored, generously sponsored, by the Pacifica Friends of the Library. Also, in 2017-18, we brought bookmobile service to the Manor Shopping Center every other Friday. We plan to expand bookmobile service to some of the public schools in the very near future. We've, the San Mateo County Libraries is, we've, the San Mateo County Libraries is, we've, I personally had the pleasure of being present for opening day and assisting the community with getting library cards, and it was, it was a very wonderful experience. I also actually worked there yesterday, just as a kind of giving other staff Thanksgiving. We actually worked there yesterday, just as a kind of giving other staff Thanksgiving. We actually worked there yesterday, just as a kind of giving other staff Thanksgiving. We actually worked there yesterday, just as a kind of giving other staff. Development for new libraries in East Palo Alto and here in Pacifica. To say more about that, on January 22, 2018, the city council received the Pacifica Library's Opportunity Report with recommendations from the Library Advisory Committee regarding system strategy, site options for construction of a new library, and operational scenarios. The council preliminarily selected a two-branch system strategy, one large branch and one small branch, and directed further evaluation of operational and financial feasibility. The council selected the existing Shaw Park Library site for the large branch, and directed staff to proceed with conceptual design and evaluation of funding feasibility. The council also incurred with the Library Advisory Committee's recommendation that Sanchez Library continued to be the location for the small branch. Since then, in September, we then developed, further, further developed this recommendation, and we're looking at an open-access service model, which would provide self-service opportunities for the public at the Sanchez Library site, as well as a potential partnership with Park Beaches and Recreation to expand community offerings at the site. And of course, I know you all know that, but I'm just putting it in there for completeness's sake. Now, here we have, as a representative of exploration, during the summer, we had a summer learning program with the Curie Odyssey Wildlife Program, where they brought all kinds of animals and things for the kids to touch and, and hold. So that's just one example of the hands-on learning that we do in the summer at the libraries. For technology, we're further building out our Makerspace Master Plan to expand programming. This includes circulating camera and filmmaking kits and providing access to virtual reality experiences and laser cutters. We significantly broaden the range of our digital collections, increasing options for the public, such as streaming video service, Spanish ebooks, and an online learning platform for young children. In Pacifica, we added laptop vending machines to both branches, which greatly expanded the number of computers available for public use during open hours. We transformed our wheel-bound outreach by adding four vehicles to provide additional avenues to explore curiosity and to connect our service to community members throughout our service area. Library staff are constantly on the move throughout Pacifica at outreach events, including Fog Fest, Coastal Cleanup, Eco Fest, PF-a-thon, and coming soon, the Rockaway Beach Tree Lighting in early December. I'm sure I'll see you all there. Left for library programs, the Pacifica Libraries have offered programming for all ages, including Storytimes, book clubs, after-school homework help, and STEAM programs, maker music and science programs, as well as all types of hands-on learning. Here in the picture, we see a picture of very popular Paint Nights, which features Carolyn Barber, our extremely dedicated Friends of the Library president and one of our most dedicated painters. In slide 15, I mean, for the opportunity slide, we see a picture of the children's entertainer and magician, Cheeky Boom, and that was another one of our summer exploration programs. For more about summer learning, San Mateo County Library was recognized as a bright spot for our Big Lift Inspiring Summer's Visionary Accomplishments. We provide a valuable life experience and employment to 230 high school and college-age interns through our Summer Youth Employment Initiative. If you're interested in the Bright Spot Award, I did not know what that was, so I looked it up. It's sponsored by the Campaign for Grade-Level Reading, and Bright Spots are defined as schools' programs in communities nationwide using innovative and promising strategies to help low-income children read at grade level. And that's one of the greatest goals of our summer learning program. In Pacifica this summer, for the first time ever, we visited every public elementary, middle, and high school, every private school, and every preschool and daycare without exception, and signed up over 6,000 Pacifica children for the summer learning program. Every child received a free book of their choice. In January, we improved senior access to information, resources, and social connectedness by putting a new senior library card into place, which is fine free. And what you see in the picture is some seniors who are enjoying lunch at the senior center during the pop-up library event that we hold there twice a month. We look forward to another year of fueling the expansion of knowledge, experiences, and community engagement, and we are so thankful for your support. Special thanks to the Library Advisory Committee, who are working so hard to make a new Pacifica library a reality, and the Pacifica Friends of the Library for their dedication to supporting library programs and services in Pacifica. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Thanks, Julie.
Any questions? Okay.
Any comment?
You would?
Thank you. Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Also, Julie, thank you to the Library Association, too, for the outreach for our constituents that have special needs and their families, that that's a big ongoing program we're...
You're welcome. Sue's referring to a grant that the San Mateo County Library System received, which we're doing a very comprehensive look at how to make library programs and services more inclusive to people of all abilities. And we've already started working on that in Pacifica. We held the focus group, which Sue was kind enough to attend. We've held some parent education workshops, and we started providing, they're called fidget toys and special seating, and then there's earmuffs that you can have to reduce sound, so a variety of those types of accessories that families can use to help their children attend programs at the Pacifica Libraries. Thanks for mentioning that, Sue.
Okay, next, we have from the Beautification Advisory Committee, the Mayor's Beautification Awards, and, okay.
Good evening, Mayor Keener, Mayor Pro Tem Valterlos, and city council members. My name is Sam Bautista, your Deputy Director of Public Works. As you all know, the Mayor's Beautification Awards Subcommittee of the Beautification Advisory Committee was formed to encourage property owners to, to promote the "Keep Pacifica Beautiful" theme. Each year, members of the Mayor's Beautification Awards Subcommittee seek nominations from the community on improvements within private property that maximizes natural resources, improves our community's overall appearance, and promotes personal pride. We believe that by showcasing and acknowledging these improvements, it will encourage other members of the community to do the same. However, in order to qualify, these improvements must be visible from the street. This year, there are four recipients of the Mayor's Beautification Award, and with, with us here tonight is Mr. Dave Martinez, who is the Chair of the Subcommittee. He will introduce the four recipients to you. Thank you.
Oops, sorry, Dave. Does it work, Sam? No?
Uh, no.
Okay. Doesn't work? Okay. Thanks a lot for your time tonight. I'd like to present the fifth annual Mayor's Beautification, or I should say Pride Awards. We have one commercial property we had this year. As I drove by it a number of times out on Pedro Point. It's a beautiful landscape that they take care of. It's a well-maintained commercial property is what we, we gave them award for. It's the Coastal Cat Clinic up on Pedro Point. They have a nice display of succulents and cactuses out in front, very well-maintained. And she did say that she doesn't take care of it, they do have someone that maintains it, but like I told them, it's, it's, it's great to know that someone has pride to take care of their property, and that's, that's why we're giving them an award. So, we're going to move on to our residential properties. The first one, we have Mary Lou Bradley. Is she here tonight? Doesn't look like Mary Lou's here. Mary Lou has a beautiful garden on Crespey Drive. We gave her an award called the Peaceful and Low Water Use Garden, because it's, has lots of succulents. And as you can see in the front yard, there's a nice little bench to sit on that she can watch people go by. So it's a nice inviting garden, well-maintained also. You guys are lucky tonight, this is so quick. The, the next house we have is Dorothy Reed. Is Dorothy here? Okay. Dorothy lives on Oddstead Boulevard, and you have to remember that our speed limits are only 25 miles in this town, and a lot of times, people fly down Oddstead, so I recommend to slow down a little bit and look at this house. It has a nice display of California natives, so we gave it a title of "The Good Use of Native and Drought-Tolerant Plants." It's kind of hard to see, but in the right-hand corner, right under Dorothy's name, you see she also has a, a rainwater catchment barrel, so she saves water on that also. And the last place we have, is this the last one? The last place we have is for Dan and Kyle, and I know they're here tonight. Come on up. I'd like to present this to you guys. Thank you very much. You guys have a beautiful garden. Thank you. Dan and Kyle just happened to buy a, a good friend of mine's house, and they did a little bit of construction out in front, and so their, their garden is, is truly new. And the, the beautiful thing about it is, Dan and Kyle have never done gardening before, correct? And, and so it blows me away that, that they did such a great job, and, and they're keeping my, my friend's house alive with, I know he's still there in his spirit. We, we call this the Inviting Privacy Garden. They live on Lindemar Boulevard, again, another street that people drive too fast on, and you need to slow down and look at these places. This one here, you might want to slow down as you're going down the street, because it's in the middle of the block, and so people probably don't see this house too much. But they put a nice fence out in front and picked some, a perfect crop of plants to grow, and I think you guys did a great job for, for newbie gardeners. So, we'd just like to thank the Beautification Advisor Committee. Unfortunately, none of them are here tonight, except for me, so I'm not going to say their names, you can read them. The, the chairmans for the, my co-chair was Patty Hontalis, and unfortunately, she has to take care of her mother tonight, so she couldn't be here. But I'd like to thank everybody for their time, and congratulations on the awards.
So, we get to take a witness for them, then?
Picture?
Picture?
Award picture?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
We haven't said it before, I think also, staff, our fire station looks great as well. Thank you. Fire Station 71, it's beautiful, it's been renovated.
She just said...
Oh, yes. Oh, you leave from there? Yes, really well done, really nice.
Okay. Moving on, we have the consent calendar, and do we have any items that you want to poll or comment on? I want to comment on item six. So, item six is compensation for the unrepresented management and confidential employees. And so this is basically the same compensation and medical benefits and so on that were extended to all the unions that we've settled with so far. And that is 2% each year for three years, and increase on the caps of medical benefits. And that's all I have.
Sorry. And on item number three, which is the equalization basin amendment to contract there, just as per my usual statements, we are still within our budget for this project.
Thank you, Deirdre.
Move to approve the consent calendar stated.
Okay.
Second.
All right, please vote. And that passes five to zero. And that passes five to zero. Okay. Now, we're on to oral communications. And I have only one speaker card, that's Lori Goldberg.
Hi. This is just general comments, but I'm kinda sad about Pacifica and who's running it. Like, tonight Gina Zari is here. She doesn't live in Pacifica, she's paid by Sam Car. I just don't get it. I don't go to her city council meetings, I don't go to where she lives. I tried to find out kinda where she might live, and all I could get is LA area. But then we have Frederick Sherman, we're being invaded. Pacifica is being invaded by outside people. There's Sam Car, the National Association of Realtors, put lots of money into this past election. It's amazing, all the people that have lost their homes, all the homeless people living in camper, whatever, mobile homes that I see parked on the streets because they can't afford rent, because of Sam Car, National Association of Realtors. Now, we have a person that works for the school district that's supposed to be representing everyone, but got backed by big money, Tommy Thompson, and Sam Car, whoever, outside real estate money. I just don't know how these people are gonna represent everyone. Then we have Frederick Sherman, Sherman Frederick, our newspaper, which has been invaded. He doesn't even live in Pacifica, he lives in Marin. I don't understand what's going on with Pacifica, and why Pacifican isn't running themselves instead of having Sam Car here, and National Association of Realtors. I mean, oh, my God, I mean, like, and Sherman Frederick from Marin. I don't go to Marin, I don't go write in his paper and try to ruin his city. It's just amazing to me that all these people are coming here and invading Pacifica. It is just really disgusting. And what they tried to do to our mayor, who's on the city council, and I keep thinking, wow, what if Mike O'Neill didn't win? Like, was Sam Car gonna do something to him, probably? I did enjoy seeing him on Highway One dressed as a pirate. Kinda made me think of, yeah, Raid from the Poor and Continue to Give to the Rich. But anyway, I just really worry about the future of Pacifica with all this outside real estate money. Like I said, Gina Zari's here tonight with her gang of whoever, probably half of them may not even live in Pacifica. What happened to the days when I used to get up here and talk, and it used to just be Pacificans? It wasn't Gina Zari, I don't remember her coming here to the city council meetings in the past. I mean, I don't understand, I don't understand why these people are, you know, why they have to come and bring their little groups of people, whatever. It's just kinda amazing to me, and it's sad that they have so much influence over Pacifica. It's really, really sad.
Thank you, Lori. Lynn Adams.
Since we're in the spirit of Thanksgiving, I just wanted to come and thank all of you council members, I wanna thank the staff of Pacifica for all that you did this year. It was really a very good year. We have, we have done good here in Pacifica. I came down Palmetto, and I thought, wow, these lights are really pretty awesome. And all the planters are getting planted, all the pot, you know, the little planting areas are getting planted, and it's been a labor of love, I know. It's not always easy. John and Sue, I wanna thank you for your service, Sue, for your many years of service. John, I'm really sad about all of the anti-John campaign that happened. I just want you to know that that's a small fraction of people that put that on, and I'm very embarrassed about that, so I just want you to know that we don't feel that way. I also, on behalf of the Pacifica Beach Coalition, would like to say that if you haven't already, take a hike between Rockaway and Lindemar, you will see a completely transformed Rockaway switchbacks, and even the bike path going over. So, it's prepped and ready for native plants to be planted in much of the area. All the wood chips are just healing the soil, suppressing the weeds, and preparing it for native plants to be healthy and to take over and get a head start on all the weeds. So, the Pacifica Beach Coalition is very proud of that work for the habitat restoration. We engaged about 1,100 visitors from businesses all over the Bay Area that came and gave back three hours of their day, and they did that work for the most part. I mean, there's other people too. A team of Pacifica Beach Coalition members that grow plants and kind of help us know where the plants are. So, and also, we've been cleaning our beaches, and if I'm not mistaken, we have over 14,000 volunteers for the year so far, over 14,000. I believe we have over eight tons, working on nine tons of trash, a ton and a half of recycles, and 50,000 pounds of green waste that were removed from our coastal open spaces. So, thank you, John and Sue in particular, city council and staff. We have a really beautiful city here. I do kinda feel like Pacificans step up, be vocal, and, you know, let's support each other. We have a lot to do, and we're pretty special. And also, thank you for the single-use plastic ban. I really, really value that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, moving on to council communications. And Deirdre Martin.
Just a couple reminders, this Thursday, we have another redistricting meeting, so I believe it's your final, our final community meeting where you would have a say in the maps. The maps are published online now that are proposed, they're nothing, nothing is final. We are still seeking your input, so please feel free to provide input on that. That's at 6:00 PM here this Thursday. Also, tomorrow night, there's a community meeting here on the Milagre Highway One, North Brown Ramp, and the Manor Overcrossing. So, those neighbors were notified, but there are also people who use, live, work, and love that off-ramp there, and it will soon be an on-ramp. So, come and join the discussion, and, you know, if you have any ideas about the bike and pedestrian walkways, how it should look, how it should be, if you're a frequent user biking, you know, your children goes to school there, come and join that discussion. It's tomorrow night here at 6:30. And I just wanna remind everyone that the Pacifica Parks and Recreation Christmas Tree lighting is this Friday night at the community center, and I think that starts around 5:30 is when it starts to get dark. There's a little chorus there, and then the Elf Market's open, and then it's also on the weekend. The, I went to the Library Advisory Committee meeting last week, but before that, I was late to the meeting because I went to the Terra Nova parking lot for the parent-teacher organization, hosted food trucks there, and I had just kind of seen a little flyer on my street, because I live right across from there, and then I saw a posting on Nextdoor. It kind of all came up, sort of seemed to be last minute, but it was the coolest thing. And I advise you to keep an eye out on Nextdoor for future fundraisers like that. They even opened the cafeteria. So, I brought my daughter, we went in, we ate cafeteria, and it was kind of, we talk about community here, but that was a real community event, because people kinda just all walked there, it was really neat, and we kind of saw all of our neighbors and things like that. So, that was really neat, and I hope they did well that night. It was a really crowded and popular event. Also, had our Emergency Preparedness Commission meeting this past week, and there was a lot of talk about the recent fires. And we will be having a, that was one of our goals last year, or this year, 18, 19, was to talk more about preparedness as it relates to natural disasters, as it relates to fire. And the Fire Department has been engaged and actively working with our police department on, you know, we don't have one evacuation route because a fire is not calculated. A tsunami always will come in from the ocean, but a fire could be anywhere, so there's no, there will not always be one evacuation route, but the Fire Department is working on, you know, publicity and events and sort of marketing towards what should we, could we, and will we do in the event that this does happen to us. So, stay tuned for that if you're interested. Let's be part of that discussion, please. And also, the Emergency Preparedness Commission is looking forward to bringing on presentations from other sort of emergency-related areas in the city, so they will be working with, you know, the Water Department to see what we would do in the event of an earthquake, and, you know, our water towers and things like that. So, those meetings are open to the public, you're free to come. I know it's on everyone's mind, and it's the third Wednesday of every month, we meet at the police station, and begins at 6:30. So, you're always welcome to come to those meetings, and I just wanted to remind everyone that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Deirdre. Anybody else? Sue DeGry.
Sorry. Yeah, so, I think we all wanna remember all the firefighters and people who have lost their homes and some their lives, and our firefighters returned, and we're very happy that they are safe. But members of our community have relatives and friends in the Paradise area and also down south, so it's very gratifying to hear how many people across the state and beyond who care for and can grasp how devastating it is to lose everything. So, I participate in the commute.org, and so, one of the new things, the high-tech stuff coming now is hovercraft. So, it's being presented for over the bay. One of the big questions is always, what kind of noise is that gonna give to neighborhoods? And so, that will be constantly watched for. So far, it doesn't seem to have much backlash noise as airplanes do, but we'll see. So, I did bring up that the big earthquake is coming, we all hear about that, and I think, I think we're somewhat immune to that, but even though we believe it, but we don't act like we believe it. So, the hovercraft would actually be able to come to the north end of Pacifica and possibly to any of our beaches, and be able to land, they don't need a helipad or anything like that, they can come down on the water and they run right up on the beach. So, it did bring that up to them, we had a very nice conversation, and they, I turned all that information over to the city manager, but that is something to watch, that would be an added ability for Pacifica to either get out of here if we needed to, or to get supplies in. So, it was on TV, and you may see it again. Also, the Lime Bikes are still very interested in being in Pacifica, so there's a lot of things in transportation that are happening. We like to think that maybe it's not happening fast enough, and we would like to see the airport aircraft noise quieter. That, as we have noted before, is gonna take a while, but I think public, keeping the public voice going gives our city attention in those quarters so that they know that this community is alert and aware and very concerned. So, we had the Women's Community Leadership Network met here at the Little Brown Church, and we had as panel members some of our youth and some of our other volunteer adults. So, we had the Youth Advisory Board member, young woman here, one of our teens, and Be the Change, the Peninsula Partnership was also represented, as economic development was more older adults, and Cindy Abbott was here from the Art and the PB and Art Commission. And I also invited a staff member because as a city, we always have to worry about having adequate and well, very capable staff people, because that's our taxpayer money, that's our city. And so, we invited our planning director to be part of that, in the hope that there will be interest out there in the community of people wanting to serve in some capacity in their city, either as a volunteer or possibly as an employee. And I would say that we were all extremely impressed with the young people. The older folks that attended, I don't mean old, but older than teenagers, we interacted really well with our young people, and the feeling was mutually, and especially on the elders with the young ones, that we're very happy with our youth. They have great intelligence, great interests, and a very great amount of common sense. So, I think City Pacifica is proud. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Mike O'Neill.
Kinda take off on Sue's, I was at the City Council Cities Meeting the other night, and they talked about the hydrocrafts, but what I thought was very interesting is they were, they were actually, there's a company starting in Burlingame that is actually gonna start regular service between SFO and Oakland and Foster City, I think the third one was. And in their plan is to actually have a hovercraft in Pacifica to take you up to San Francisco at some point in the next three, four years. I thought that was pretty interesting. On Sunday, they're having the tree lighting ceremony in Rockaway. Last year, there was about 2,500, 3,000 people there, so they are running shuttles from Roberts Road, and I think it's Cabrillo's, the other one, and go there, and there's a lot of activities for kids. I know the bookmobile's gonna be there, face painting and making cookies and stuff like that are all gonna be there. So, and I've never been dressed as a pirate, so, okay?
Sue Vonnalos.
I went to a Jackie Spear meeting, which was really interesting because she featured a man who wrote a book called Evicted. It was, Sue was there too, and it was quite interesting talking about ways to encourage affordable housing and trying to not have people evicted. All of us attended the public map meeting, we got good input from the public at that meeting, even though it was Saturday morning from 10:00 to 12:00. We, a few of us went to the Planning Commission last week to hear what the public comments were on the local coastal plan, and it was overwhelmingly in one direction. Rockaway, hovercraft, hovercraft, I thought was totally interesting too, because it's hovercraft ferries, it's not just small hovercraft, they can hold about 60 people. So, if they could get people to, instead of being on a bus, to go around, it would be great. And they are run by air, so they don't, they're not polluting. Quite interesting. I went to the grand opening of something called Smart Homes ADU. It's a company that builds second residential units, that's accessory dwelling units, ADU. They build them from containers. Apparently, there are 24 million empty containers in the United States. These units range from studios to two bedrooms. The cost is $43,000 to, the most expensive one is $63,000, sorry, $67,000. They are fully contained, they have kitchens and bathrooms and bedrooms, and they are, they would be hooked up totally to the person's PG&E sewer and water. So, they are permanent structures on permanent foundations. And they were building one in Pacifica, but they had to move it to South San Francisco, and South San Francisco had them there for people to see, and we walked through them. Quite an interesting other alternative for second residential units. That's it.
Thank you, Sue. So, I went to two meetings of Peninsula Clean Energy these last two weeks, and basically, not much that would interest any of you happened there, although it was of interest to me. But, but the thing about Peninsula Clean Energy is that it reduces all of our carbon footprint. It reduces CO2 emissions in Samatail County for 97% of the population that get their power from Peninsula Clean Energy. They get electricity from Peninsula Clean Energy, and it's delivered by PG&E. And so, the Peninsula Clean Energy power is about 85% greenhouse gas-free. It's much cleaner than what PG&E would offer, and it's 5% cheaper than what PG&E would offer. So, that's my spiel. So that's my spiel.
Is that one of those opt-out things or opt-in?
Opt-out, yeah. Staff Communications.
Can I have one more thing?
Oh, one more. Deirdre.
I just wanted a correction. Sue, the Lime Bikes, I, I actually don't think they're interested in Pacifica, which I, I think we had a discussion with them. And they're, we're not really well-suited for Lime Bikes. We can talk about that offline, but also as a member of a B-PAC, I have a lot more information on that. And I actually don't recommend it for our current geographical situation. And if anybody wants to talk to me about it, feel free to email me or call me.
Okay, thanks. Staff Communications.
Thank you, Mayor Keener. Council members, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. I just had a few items I wanted to mention. They were already mentioned by the council members, but I'll take the opportunity to just repeat them. The first two relate to the upcoming meetings as was mentioned. Tomorrow night is a meeting here in the council chambers regarding the Manor Overcrossing project. And then Thursday night is the fourth meeting, public meeting related to the districting process, council's consideration of that. And looking at the sort of second iteration of the draft maps and related to the districting process. Anyone who wants to learn about that or, you know, contribute can go to drawpacifica.org and see the draft maps that are being, that will be discussed. And then finally, I also did want to extend a special thank you to our North County Fire Authority personnel who have spent the last few weeks up in Paradise. Deputy Chief Lauderdale was up there the entire time and numerous firefighters working on, on that very difficult fire. And thankfully, it is 100% contained now. And they are, they have returned home.
Thank you. All right, moving on again. We have a, a public hearing. And this is the recology of the coast rate adjustment for 2019. And I believe Lorenzo Hines has a staff report for us.
Indeed. We also have a lack of chairs.
My name is Lorenzo Hines. I'm the Assistant City Manager. I'm here to present tonight the 2019 Recology of the Coast Rate Adjustment. In February 2010, the City of Pacifica entered into a franchise agreement with Recology. And this agreement was amended in October 2016. This agreement generally grants Recology the exclusive right in franchise to collect solid waste generated from residential premises, commercial premises, and city facilities, targeted recyclables, organic materials, construction, and demolition debris. The agreement also generally grants Recology's the non-exclusive right in franchise to collect the following materials, targeted recyclable materials and major appliances and specialty recyclables or reusable materials. Within the agreement is a rate adjustment provision. And the rate adjustment period that we're in right now, or that we're talking about right now is rate number 10, which covers the period of January 1, 2019 through December 31, 2019. As prescribed in the agreement, this particular rate period required a cost-based rate adjustment. And so Recology sent in various information, laying out their, their case for a rate increase initially proposed at 1.97%. We typically bring in a third-party consultant to review those initial responses or initial submissions. And the consultant, HF&amp;H consultants, came back and determined that it was actually a 2.75% increase that is needed in this particular case. And so what's before you is the proposal to increase Recology's rates by 2.75%. In accordance with the settlement agreement between the city, Recology, and Lionel Lemdy, we sent out a public notice to 11,797 customers on October 3, letting them see the new rates, also informing them of the public hearing tonight. We were intending, our, our charge was to get that notice out 45 days prior to this hearing and, and which we did. As of 9:00 AM November 21, 2018, the city had received five protest letters regarding this rate adjustment. The, the contract or the agreement between the city and Recology indicates that the increase would be denied if a majority protest against the rate existed. In other words, if 50% of the customers plus one protested, then the rate would be, then the rate would be overturned. And so at this point, we, we have five protests. I don't know if we've received any more between now, okay? So we're still up at five. And we are, we need about 5,600 in order to overturn this rate adjustment. So at tonight's public hearing, individuals have the opportunity to comment on the proposed rate increase. And at the conclusion of the public hearing, the city clerk shall complete the tabulation of all protests received, including those received during this public hearing, and shall the result, and shall report the results of the tabulation to the city council upon And so that concludes my report.
Thank you, Lorenzo. Any questions from council? Deirdre.
No question, just a comment. So just for clarification, that most of residential customers who subscribe to the 20-gallon can, monthly rate would increase from 2303 to 2366, which is 63 cents per month increase or $7.56 annually.
Yes.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll open the public hearing and I have two speaker cards at present. Lori Goldberg and Rick Zipkin. Following Lori.
Hi, I'm not really majorly against the increase. I don't think it's that, that bad compared to our water bills, which have really like quadrupled. But a friend of mine who's a, a retired garbage man was mentioning to me, and he was kind of wondering about this. He said when Devil Slide, this was a while ago, when Devil Slide slid and people, they, there were, it was a hard time getting through, that the rates were raised. And it said that when they reopened the road, they raised the rates because the garbage trucks couldn't get through and whatever, so they raised the rates. And then when it reopened, that the rates were going to be rolled back, and they never were. And my friend's not here today, but I just wanted to kind of mention that because he was wondering why the rates keep going up and they didn't roll them back when that happened, when the road, Highway 1 reopened between here and Half Moon Bay. And that's, that's about all I want to say.
Thank you, Lori. Rip Zip, Rick Zipkin, I'm sorry.
Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. As I say, good evening and thank you for allowing me to speak concerning the proposed Recology of the Coast rate increase. It seems to me that almost everything seems to go up to increase more these days than salaries or unemployment insurance or social security payments, et cetera. These things that people really need to live and eat, pay rent and pay bills, et cetera. I ask you please to help stop these utility rate increases by not raising your Recology of the Coast rates. As I have said, with all these rates increasing, it is getting harder and harder to make ends meet. And any respite from these various rate increases would be greatly appreciated. So again, I ask you please to keep your rates as, as they are now so we can all financially manage our lives better, make it a little better, make it a little easier. Again, thank you very much for listening to me and please seriously consider what I have just said and asked of you. Thanks again for your time, consideration, and help. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick.
This may, this may be out of line. I apologize if it is. I just want to thank John and Sue for all this service. I appreciate it.
Okay, I have no further speaker cards. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Deirdre.
I appreciate those comments. So one of the reasons why our rates are increasing is because we used to send all of our garbage to China to take care of. And apparently, they don't like that anymore. So we've got to figure out what to do with our own trash. And one of the ways that we can help decrease our, our rates at home is to decrease our consumption of packaging. So unfortunately, I, you know, I, while I support this rate increase, I, I also support and encourage people to take a look at their, you know, how they can reduce their rates at home by reducing their, their intake and, and look for, you know, better, better ways for less trash reduction, or less trash intake, pardon me.
Thank you, Deirdre. Sue.
So the attorney, I don't remember why there, there can't be such a thing as hardship rates. Is there some law about that, I believe?
Prop 218 requires that the costs for every ratepayer be reasonably allocated among all the ratepayers. If the council wanted to provide some sort of exemption or rate decrease for certain types of ratepayers, that would have to come out of the city's general fund and could not come out of the sewer enterprise fund.
Thank you.
Mike O'Neil.
I don't think any, any break given to a Recology customer, would that come out of the sewer fund, as you just said, or?
I'm sorry.
The general fund?
It would have, it wouldn't be able to come out of the enterprise fund. It wouldn't be able to come out of the rates that are being paid for these services. They would have to come out of the city's separate general fund.
Okay, I just, that's, that's what it was, but...
Yeah, I misspoke. I apologize.
No problem. I do, just like everybody remembered that we also have to pay the same garbage rate and that if someone, if you, if you call up the Recology, they'll be happy to talk to you about maybe a smaller can or some other arrangements. I've always, I've never heard anybody say Chris is unapproachable. So I really would urge that. And true to what Deirdre said is prior to certain relation breakdowns with China, they used to pay us $10 a pound for Recology or ton. And we're now paying them 40 bucks a ton. So there, it's kind of reversed and that's why we have to do what we have to do. So I also would like to say is that the majority of the Recology workers are Pacificans. And they do pay benefits and pension and health benefits union. So I think if we want everybody to have a living wage and decent working conditions, I think it's important that we all kind of like share the costs. So, but I would encourage you to call Chris and if there can be some sort of arrangements.
Thank you, Mike. Sue Vadas.
Lorenzo, what year did Recology reduce our rates? By 9%, I think?
So over the past five years, from 2015 to 2019, the average rate increase is 0.38%. Getting specifically to your question, they reduced their rates by 9.37% for calendar year 2016. In calendar year 2017, they did not increase their rates at all, so that was a 0% increase. And then 2018, 6.66, and then 2019, 2.75. So, and if I go all the way back to 2015, it was only 1.87.
Thank you.
So I think they've done a, a good job at managing their cost.
And I'd like to give kudos to the people of Pacifica because almost everyone does only have a 20-gallon can. And I think that's a really good goal to keep it at a 20-gallon can and reiterate what Deirdre said, that it's a 63 cent a month increase. So I'm in favor.
Yeah. And the other reason for most of Pacifica using that 20-gallon can is the high rate of recycling that, that we have in this community. And that's because Recology collects all that recycling in, in one bin and then carts it off to their sorting center where they sort it. And they used to ship it to China and now I don't know what they're doing with it, but they are not sending it to the landfill. That Chris Porter has assured me. Okay.
Mayor Keener, before the, before the council takes action, I just want to make clear for the record because it's been mentioned a couple times and, since City Manager Hines can elaborate. The Recology concerning the China market for recyclables is still negotiating and working with their recycler about the impact of that and the future impact of that, as is every recycling company throughout the United States. Those impacts are not factored into this rate adjustment. And as was previously mentioned to the council back in October, we, depending on the results of those negotiations, we may see Recology come back to the city per the terms of our agreement with an adjustment depending on how that, that marketplace pans out and if, if ACM Hines has any addition to that. I just wanted to make sure that that's clear.
Thank you.
Thanks for that clarification. So then, well, I guess then just to point out that if the majority of people who work for Recology live and work in Pacifica, that's a good thing. And, you know, we, somebody pointed out that we should be getting raises and they're probably getting raises maybe based on some of these increases. And, and we can offset at home by, by reducing our intake. So even though we will probably be back here or most likely be back here talking about China, we, we, we should be dealing with our own trash regardless.
Sue Vadas.
I'd also like to say that Recology is a big participant in events all over Pacifica. They, they contribute to the beach cleanup. They pick up all of, they put out receptacles for the tree lighting and they come and pick up the excessive amount of trash that happens that night. They participate in a lot of community events and I'd like to thank them for that.
Sue. Mike O'Neil.
I was just going to make the motion.
Okay.
Okay. Move that the city council adopt a resolution of the City of Pacifica confirming the 2.75% rate adjustment per Recology of the Coast rate application for the period of January 1, 2019 to December 31, 2019.
Do I have a second? Okay, thank you. Please vote. Okay, and that passes 5 to 0. All right, on to consideration. And the 2018 presentation of pension costs. And the 2018 presentation of pension costs.
Mr. Mayor, Lorenzo Heinz here, once again.
Hi, Lorenzo.
Hi. So our next item is a 2018 presentation of the city's pension cost. What we're recommending as far as action tonight is that the council receive an updated presentation of the city's CalPERS pension liability and the city's actions toward addressing recommendations in the July 17th, 2018 San Mateo County Grand Jury Report entitled "Soaring City Pension Cost." The second thing that we're, the second action that we're recommending is that the council direct the city manager to deliver a report to the city council in connection with the development of the 2019-2020 annual city budget, which evaluates options to address pension costs and hold public hearings to discuss and consider such options. Last year, staff presented our first pension cost summary on September 25th, 2017. We provided information about the annual impact of CalPERS's reduction in the discount rate. Tonight's discussion provides an update regarding those pension costs. And so we've put together a little PowerPoint presentation here to kind of lay out just sort of the bare bones of what a pension looks like. To my left is Doug Pryor, and Doug is our actuary, and he works with a firm called Bartel &amp; Associates. And so Doug will be doing a slightly lower drill down into the city's particular pension situation in his presentation. So we'll get through these presentations as quickly as we can. We know this is sort of dry material, but necessary for everyone to hear. So the pension plan is an agreement to provide a defined retirement benefit in exchange for services. It's funded in a trust, which is essentially an investment portfolio structured to provide enough funds to pay retiree benefits. The benefits are paid from the trust to retired employees on a monthly basis. The city contracts with the California Public Employees Retirement System a defined benefit plan for the majority of our employees. The plan, the pension plan funded status is, you'll hear that term, and the plan's funded status is the relationship between the liability associated with employee retirement and the assets needed to pay this liability. The typical pension liability includes amounts for active employees, retired employees, inactive employees. Pension assets are accumulated through employee contra-employer contributions, active employee contributions, and I emphasize the word "active" employee contributions, and investment earnings on those dollars. The expected investment earnings rate is referred to as the discount rate. The investment return and the accumulated contributions, offset by benefits and expenses paid, creates the market asset value of the pension. And so the difference between the pension liability and the market asset value represents an unfunded liability. The pension formula essentially is, we've got the liability, which is made up of obligations to active employees, retired employees, and inactive employees, less the market value of the assets, the assets that you have to pay that liability. And then whatever that difference is, is the unfunded liability. And as I mentioned earlier, that the city contracts with CalPERS for most of our employees. As of 2017, the city paid retirement benefits to 331 retirees and has to accrue pension liability for 100, an additional 175 active employees. The city contributes a share of pension contributions, and the employees contribute a share of pension contributions as well. Additionally, the city is bargaining with labor units so that the employees also pay a small share of the city's pension cost. CalPERS manages our city contributions and have historically, historically, projected a 7.5% rate of return, or discount rate. However, for the last 10 years, the CalPERS actual rate of return has been about 5.8%. So in part because our rate of return has been below discount rate, the city has an unfunded liability. The city annually budgets and pays the required contributions, and so we always deliver a balanced budget to you. And it includes, these contributions include the payback necessary to alleviate the unfunded liability as determined by CalPERS. On December 21st, 2016, CalPERS lowered their discount rate from 7.5% down to 7% over the three subsequent years. And so the phase-in period you see below in the table here. As this discount rate gets lower, our pension liability gets higher. And so as a result of this policy change by CalPERS, we estimate that the city will incur pension liabilities, pension expenses of approximately closer to $700,000 average over the next four years. And then the pension liability increase will drop to about $385,000 in year five. We'll, of course, we'll be incorporating these estimates into our long-term forecast and our 20, should be 1920 budget development process. So Doug Pryor is going to drill down just a little bit lower and kind of show you how all these numbers are coming together. Clerk Coffey, would you mind?
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I've put together, tried to boil the 100-plus-page document you have in your packet down to 15 pages. So I may not hit on your favorites, but I'm going to try to cover the sort of key topics here fairly quickly. We have some background on changes CalPERS has made. This really kind of what was all set in place back in 2013 when CalPERS got rid of their actual value of assets and went to rolling, or got rid of the rolling amortization, and went to this ramp-up to reflect that increase in the costs. And the ramp-up is reflected over a five-year period. So the change they made back in 2013 is still not yet fully impactful rates. That's going to happen with full impact is in next year, in 1920. So you have that sort of delayed impact coming down the road from that change made back in 2013. And then they have further moved, as Lorenzo mentioned, to change the discount rate from the 7.5% they were originally at. They had this scheduled to ramp down to 7% over a series of three evaluations. You're kind of in the middle of that process. But the full impact for those changes won't occur, won't fully kind of sort of be brought into your contributions until 2425. So whenever you're looking at projections of what's going to happen going forward, there's going to be this expectation of rates increasing over a 10- to 15-year period going forward.
Excuse me, could you explain why the effect is delayed between the initial impact, say, in 2021 and the full impact in fiscal year 2425?
Yeah, that's the method CalPERS chose to use to amortize these changes. So what they're trying to do is, you know, ease agencies into this, is what they're doing. They could, you know, if it weren't for budgetary constraints, I think they would have been perfectly happy to say, let's have the full rate kick in 2021. But the problem is, you'd see big jumps. And so they're just trying to gradually get everyone there.
Thank you.
And so those are the discount rates, changes they have are set in stone. And then what else is going to happen going forward is, CalPERS has this thing called a risk mitigation policy or strategy. And what that entails is, you know, CalPERS is, if you make a comparison to 401K plan, CalPERS is not like a 20-year-old anymore. They're more like a 60-year-old. And those two individuals would not invest the same way. CalPERS traditionally have been investing like the 20- to 30-year-old. They're trying to move to something that's more sort of age-appropriate for the system, you might say. So that's just an analogy, of course. But what they're really going to end up doing is wait for years where there are better returns than expected. And in those years where they have good returns, they're going to lower the risk in the portfolio, move from the equity, move more from equities into fixed income, reduce the volatility. That's going to mean lower future investment earnings, which mean more money has to come from the agency to pay for benefits, and ultimately, lower discount rates in the future. So we have, this slide, it's not a fixed schedule, but this slide is probably one of the more confusing ones we have. But as far as the risk mitigation policy, currently, the most recent report the city has has a 7.25% discount rate. The next valuation will be at 7%. And then as they implement the risk mitigation policy, again, it's not set, it's not a set schedule. It's going to depend on where returns are, but we expect them to kind of ramp down along that thick green line in the middle there, ultimately getting to 6% in about 20 years. Okay? So this is important when you start looking at liabilities and thinking about, well, what's the appropriate rate to discount those liabilities with? Is it 7.25%? I think the answer is clearly no on that one. Is it 7? Possibly today. But over the long run, what this is saying is you're not going to expect to get 7% either. You're probably going to get something in between the 7 and the 6. Let's get into some general background on the CalPERS system. We move forward. This is now the miscellaneous program. And these numbers are right out of the CalPERS reports as of June 30th, 17.
Excuse me, and so that is for the miscellaneous employees. Is that right?
Yes. You're going to see a slide for the miscellaneous employees, fire, and police.
Thank you.
And then we'll have some totals, brief totals at the end, too. So, I'm sorry, a $94 million accrued liability, $78.2 million in assets, and a $16 million unfunded liability. Now, that's at 7.25%. Their, in the next report they released, they could go to 7%. If you looked at this on a 7% basis for the discount rate, you'd be at $18.5 million unfunded. And they also show a 6% discount rate liability, which results in a $31 million unfunded liability. Because of that risk mitigation policy, if you're asking for what our best estimate is, is it would be somewhere in between those two numbers, between the 7 and the 6% in terms of the unfunded liability. Okay? Over the next, yeah, certainly over the next 20 years, we expect them to gradually decrease to 6%. So in terms of where contributions are expected to go, we flip forward to the next slide. Maybe I lied about that early one being the most confusing, but this one's a little small. If you look at this slide, look at the thick green line. The thick green line is where we expect your contribution rates to go over the next 30 years. So for the year we're in, contribution rates are about 18.2% of payroll. And what you see is, due to the various factors, I mentioned the first couple slides, you see the increases over almost a 15-year period. Contribution is expected to peak out there in 2032 at about 32% of payroll. Okay? Now, that's, the middle line is what we expect, and what you should think of the lines shooting up and up, they're kind of shooting up above that, or down below, are sort of good and bad investment return scenarios, right? So what that is saying is that in that year where you peak at 32% of payroll, there's, you can look at this as a bad, certainly as a bad scenario. Might peak at 48% of payroll with bad returns, might be as low as 13% of payroll if things go well, somewhere in that range. Half the time, we expect to be somewhere between those two. Ultimately, though, you will expect it to pay the unfunded liability down. And so you see the gradual decline eventually as the unfunded liability is paid off. That's kind of, even with all the expectation of lower discount rates, you're still expected on this schedule to pay the unfunded liability off over roughly a 20- to 30-year period. We have these, a shorter projection here for, again, this is, I think this is the last slide on miscellaneous, and they'll kind of repeat the same information for the police and fire plans. In terms of dollar amounts, we have, started the, there's the normal, so the total city payment, you have the normal cost payment. That's the line that's being pointed out there. I suppose that's in orange. It's offset really by this, by the employee, employees are contributing part of the city rate. So that line there really represents 2.5% of payroll that miscellaneous employees are paying towards the city rates. You have, the red is the payment on the unfunded liability. So you have the total city cost of the top green line, which is starting out at about $1.6 million. I always forget to mention that on slides like these, there's in thousands of dollars. But that first data point there for this year, expected contributions, about $1.6, $1.7 million, increasing to almost $3.9 million over a 10-plus-year period. So you see a similar story on each of the plans, really. I mean, as we move forward to the safety police plan. Here now, you do have actually separate reports from CalPERS. Here, we're aggregating all the CalPERS reports for safety because you're in a risk pool. Unlike miscellaneous, you have a standalone plan, but here we're aggregating the information. What you see here is a $71.5 million accrued liability, $51.7 million in assets, and unfunded of $19.8 million. That's at the 7.25% discount rate. Again, if you measured it at 7, it would, the unfunded liability would grow to about $21.9 million. And at 6%, about $32 million. And once again, I think the real answer is somewhere in between those two, between the $21 and $32 million. As you look at contribution rates here, you see you're starting higher here at almost 40, a little over 43% of payroll expected for this year. That's expected to peak out. Actually, oddly enough, all these plans are peaking out at the same year. You might, you might expect that to happen, but with the way CalPERS amortizes unfunded liabilities, there's usually a little variation. You happen to be, each of these plans is peaking at 3132, fiscal year of 3132. So here, the peak is expected to be at 76% of payroll, kind of a bad investment return scenario. We get you to 99% of payroll, a little above that. Good scenario would still have you at 48% of payroll in 2032. Again, you are expected to pay the unfunded liability off. Eventually, that will decline, but that's many, many years out. In terms of dollar amounts, we have the same graphic here. The bottom line there are the employee contributions. In this case, for police safety, it averages about 4.3% of payroll that the police are paying towards the city rate, which is really, I think, 4% for POA and 5% for management supervisors. But nonetheless, you know, I won't go through each of these lines, but you get to the top, and total city contributions this year expected to be about $1.6 million and growing to a little under $3.8 million over the 10-year period. That's the police plan. Once again, we kind of have this similar for, similar slides for fire safety. $43.4 million accrued liability, $32-plus million in assets, unfunded $11 million roughly at 7.25%. You go to 7, you're about at $12.4 million, $17.9. You go to seven, you're about at $12.4 million, 17.9 at six percent. So you're kind of somewhere in between there, really, in terms of what best estimate of the unfunded liability would be for the fire plan. Contribution projections, starting out at about 34.5% of payroll. Once again, it peaks out in fiscal year 32 at about 64% of payroll. Kind of have a high here of 84, a low of 40% of payroll. And of course, just as with all the plans, you're expected to pay the unfunded liability off in many years out. See eventual decline in the rates. In terms of dollar amounts for fire, about $1.1 million. I'm going to jump into the, the very top. Employee contributions here are about 3.2% of payroll overall, which is three, I think, percent of payroll paid by IAFF, and about 5% for battalion chiefs. You have the unfunded liability payment there. Ultimately, you're at about the $1.1 million for this year, and escalating up to about $2.3 million for the final year in the projection period. We do have one slide here with the totals all in for miscellaneous and safety. $4.3 million for fiscal year 19, escalating to a little over $10 million by the final projection.
And so the slide that he's referring to, page 81, is the corrected packet page 227 that was passed out to you right before we began the presentation, okay? So it won't match what's in the original staff report.
Thank you. So, you know, if you look at, you look at these projections, I guess you'd say very unlikely the investment returns are going to be high enough to prevent a significant increase in rates going forward. And then there's, there's that sort of fact. I think the other fact is that there's going to be this peak out there that's probably going to be pretty darn painful. And, you know, by the way, I didn't, and you have a lot of background, kind of jumped to the numbers, but, you know, you're not alone in this, right? I mean, most, most agencies look very much like this, unfortunately. So, you know, 15 years out roughly, you have this peak. And so, you know, what, what can be done, I guess, is, is one of the questions. Certainly, one of the things that can be done, if you have the resources, would be to set more money aside now, because you know eventually you're going to be paying more, right? And sort of one of the things that have been set up for paying additional funds are the 115 trusts. And so we have a, I'm just, we have a lot, a lot more in the 115 pages in the, in the full packet, but I just want to kind of quickly cover an example on how the 115 trust might be used. Just a couple of slides here, so it's a...
Before you get into that, I'd just like to point out that, especially for police and fire, but also for the miscellaneous employees, the majority of the increase that we're, that we're going to see for the next 10 or 12 years is in the unfunded liability and not in the so-called normal cost of the pension that we pay. Isn't that?
That's right. For example, that's sheer across the board, and for example, here is safety, fire, right? And you have the, the gold line is the normal cost there. The red line is the unfunded payment, and yes, that's where the, the cost is coming from.
Okay, thank you.
So, you know, 115 trust, the idea is to, if you had additional funds to set aside for Cow, towards this, this, this obligation that's coming down the road, you could set the money aside in the 115 trust. It can only be, be then used to essentially move money over to Cowper's, right? So you might ask, well, wait, if we're going to take this mon, some money and put it in 115 trust, eventually has to go to Cowper's, why do we do it at all, right? And this, this, okay, this may be the, the third most confusing chart of the three. This is showing, this is an example of if you had a million dollars that you sent to Cowper's. Now, what Cowper's will do with that money is it will say, okay, you're giving us additional funds. We need to, to give you some sort of credit in terms of how it's going to reduce your contributions in the future. The, the thick green line here is the, for the miscellaneous plan, the projected contribution rates that we had in the pre, in the early slides, right? And the dotted lines are kind of two options for how Cowper's could credit the million dollars. So we kept the green line with the same graphic as earlier, just because it is, it, those are the same numbers as we had earlier in the slides. And then the red are dotted to, so that they can show up. But, so we're not suggesting that there's no difference. The graphic makes it look maybe closer than it is, but the real point to this graphic is that if you give additional money to Cowper's, you're right back on the same sort of ramp up with a peak coming 20, 2000 fiscal year 23. It's a little lower, but you're still facing kind of that same issue of, of having very high rates down the road. And the advantage to the 115 trust is, here's how you could do this with the same million dollars, but given to 115 trust. And the idea here is you hold it in the trust and you wait until you, you set a target. In this case, it's 28% of payroll. And so what you're doing is you put the money in the 115 trust, you continue to pay Cowper's what they ask, and then when you get to these outer years, you start transferring money over, right? And so the advantage is you move from the green with the peak out there to the red and shave off those, those large amounts in the outer years. So there's a, a number of different examples in the, in the packet with, I mean, we'll go through it with miscellaneous safety, and you can do sort of present value analysis on the benefit of the 115 versus the Cowper's contributions, but it's just kind of food for thought on, on approach and why, you know, in the earlier slide, I think we mentioned there's over 100, I think at this point, 130 agencies in the state have set up the 115 trust. PARs, PFM, Kenan are kind of the main providers. Cowper's, there is some recent legislation that was passed. Cowper's will be offering its own 115 trust potentially by June of, of next year to accept funds that, so you could invest them with Cowper's. The idea would be, you, even if you invested it with Cowper's, you would still stay on that green path until you chose to pull money out of the trust, at which point you could shoot over it or reduce your future rates down to the orange, okay? So that's a lot of little time, but that's...
All righty. Doug, thank you so much. Counsel, I'm going to take you back to packet page 184. And, and so, and so we talk about sort of the fiscal impact, and these, you see under the fiscal impact, what we, what we see is the increase in our, our pension cost, the unfunded pension costs through the years. I also wanted to make sure you saw that this summary of our overall pension costs in unfunded or funded slash unfunded status as of 6/30/2017. Using that discount rate of 7.25% and adding up all three of those groups, miscellaneous, police, and fire, we've got an unfunded liability, total liability citywide of about $47.1 million as of June 30, 2017. So we've got a funded ratio of 77%, so we've got our work set out for us. On the next page, back at page 185, I have summarized the, the recommendations that were submitted with the San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury Report, again, entitled "Soaring City Pension Costs." And I wanted to just talk with you about those recommendations and what we're doing to address those recommendations. So the first recommendation is by December 31, 2018, the city shall, shall schedule a public hearing to engage residents in addressing the city's increased pension costs and to develop a long-term plan to address them. So our first presentation to counsel on September 25, 2017, provided information about the impact of the PERS reduction. Tonight's discussion provides an update to the ongoing conversation regarding the pensions. And so during the public testimony part of this item, we'll hear from the public regarding their feelings on this particular issue. The second recommendation is by December 31, 2018, and annually thereafter, the city published a report as specified on its website detailing information about the city's pension obligations. I'm currently working with Doug to publish such a report to meet, per the specifications laid out per the grand jury report, and we'll have that report on the website by December 31. The next recommendation is by no later than December 31, 2018, and annually thereafter, the cities, the city instructed staff to deliver a report as specified to the city council in connection with the city's financial plan, evaluating available options to address pension costs, and that each city hold public hearings to discuss and consider such options no less than every other fiscal year. And so what we're recommending tonight is that counsel formally direct staff to deliver the report as part of the development of the 2019-20 annual city budget. The fourth recommendation is by June 30, 2019, each city develop and publish a long-term financial plan as specified to deal with the rising pension costs and update that plan annually. This recommendation will be addressed with the annual presentation of the long-term financial plan, which we typically do in the spring of the calendar year. So I wanted to make sure you all knew that we were aware of those recommendations and that we're taking steps toward addressing them. And with that, that concludes our report.
Thank you, both of you. And are there any questions from counsel at this time?
I forget, what does inactive employee mean?
Inactive employees are employees that, I believe they, they worked here, but they now moved to another agency, is that?
Oh, that's right, I remember.
Yeah. And so if I were to leave and go be the CFO of the San Diego Chargers, I would be an inactive employee.
I got, oh, thank you, I forgot.
Judy Martin.
So you sort of asked, answered one of my questions, which was going to be, what is our plan? You know, what is our longer-term plan? And I expect that you're already doing your research in terms of these 115s, and I also expect that you'll be working with Bartol and Associates on their recommendation.
Yes.
In that regard, okay.
And, and also adhering to the grand jury report. This will be one of the challenges that we'll have balancing the 2019-2020 budget that we'll bring to you next spring. It will be, it won't be the easiest thing to balance, because as you can see here, you know, we've got, you know, we've got six figures that we have to fit into a budget. And so we'll bring that to you next year, but it'll be, it'll be up front and center.
Yeah, so it's bad news, but good news that we're talking about it.
Yes.
And we should all just keep it really in the front of our, our brains that, you know, if things are, we're going to have to cut costs to other places.
Right.
Because we value our employees and our past employees as well.
But it's also something to keep in mind if opportunities come our way that produce, that are revenue-producing opportunities. And something to just add another dynamic to the analysis of that opportunity, okay?
Thanks.
That's a good way of putting it.
Yes.
Can I follow up on that? So in a way, you're saying that investments may actually be profitable versus flat or below? And that would be helpful, is that what we're saying?
Well, what I, what I was trying to say is that if, if an opportunity, a new enterprise or a new commercial entity was looking to settle here in Pacifica, that in addition to the sort of the societal and the typical economic impacts that we would look at or analyze, that one of the other things that we should be analyzing is, all right, are the revenues from this particular entity going to help us solve some of these really big issues that we've got to solve?
Yeah. And so I, I would say also that we do potentially have several new sources of revenue.
Yes.
Possibly coming online, the cannabis excise tax, increased TOT from, from the Airbnbs and VRBOs of Pacifica, and, and possibly from new hotels. And, but all of those are, all of those potential revenues are pretty much spoken for by this report.
Right.
Yeah. I have no speaker cards for this item. So if there are no other comments from counsel, I'll, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion?
Okay.
That we receive the updated presentation and also direct the city manager to deliver a report as stated in the agenda.
Welcome.
Seconded by Sue. Please vote. And that passes five to zero. Thank you. And our next item is the Affordable Housing Initiatives Research and Rent Advisory Task Force Next Steps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name's Tina Wermeyer, I'm the planning director. I'll be giving this report. In January of 2016, the city council directed formation of a rent advisory task force to develop an advisory measure addressing tenant landlord relations. An advisory measure is a voluntary set of principles that result in stability and predictability for both the tenant and landlord, but would not have the force and effect of law. The council received an update from the task force regarding their progress in May of 2017. And at that time, the council decided to place the task force on hiatus pending results of a November 2017 election, at which a rent stabilization ballot measure was presented to the voters. That measure was not adopted, and the task force remained on hiatus since then. Affordable housing continues to be a high priority for the council, and as such, the council's list of priority projects for this fiscal year includes several initiatives which have the potential to directly affect or address housing affordability. Those include initiatives number five and six related to the Palmetto area revitalization, establishing a PDA and beginning the preparation, or beginning to prepare a Palmetto district specific plan. These initiatives relate to focused planning efforts, which have the potential to result in the creation of land use regulations, which could incentivize market rate and affordable housing development. And importantly, adoption of a specific plan could streamline environmental review of future housing developments to achieve the construction of housing units sooner and at a, and at a lower cost. Additionally, council initiative number seven, which is implement housing element actions, the action plan and explore ways the city can support affordable housing initiatives. And this priority initiative would allow staff to focus on other activities, which do not necessarily involve the construction of new housing units, but rather on programs such as housing rehab, acquisition and preservation, ADU education, energy efficiency improvements to reduce utility costs, and similar programs. These activities are important complement to actually building housing. These activities are important complement to actually building housing. Staff intends to conduct a holistic review of planning approaches, funding options, and partnership opportunities with other government and non-government agencies, and we have already started having some of those meetings. We intend to apply for a Home for All grant, and if approved, funds would be utilized to engage a broad segment of the Pacifica community on housing topics in the first quarter of 19. And grant awards are expected by the end of 18, so we don't know if we have those yet. Staff will return to the council with an assessment of potential options and a recommended strategy for advancing housing affordability in the city. Therefore, staff is recommending that the council not reconvene the rent advisory task force, as further work on advisory measure would not be the best use of staff's limited time and resources, which could be directed to housing affordability, other housing affordability items on the council's work plan. So be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tina. Any questions from council? Okay. I do have a few speaker cards here. Suzanne Moore, followed by Marcia Murphy, followed by Tiger Jazz Big Stick.
I agree with recommendations from our city manager. To reconvene the rent advisory task force would not be the best use of our city's limited staff or fiscal resources. The charter of the rent advisory task force delineated any advisory measure would require voluntary compliance of property owners and tenants alike. Since our community has been unable to voluntarily progress on this issue, it seems we can better focus our efforts on other measures of affordable housing. We should never lose track, however, of the need to reduce displacement of our longtime Pacifica residents, to reduce the risk of homelessness of residents who are made vulnerable by skyrocketing rents, and to protect the economic diversity of this city that we treasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Marcia Murphy, followed by Tiger Jazz Big Stick.
So I just want to support the council in doing anything they can to help this city with affordable housing, whatever you come up with, let's do it, let's do it quick. People are really suffering. Then the other thing I wanted to say is, Sue Degree, thank you so much for your years of service, it's been terrific. You've been so dedicated up there. And John, I hardly have words, except I did write a few, which I just want to thank you for your very studied and very thoughtful considerations of all the council issues. Pacifica is really losing something and losing you, and especially the way it happened. I'm still flabbergasted. So thank you, thank you for all your service.
Thank you. Tiger Jazz Big Stick.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council, I am Tiger Jazz Twirls Big Stick of Pacifica, bygones. So first of all, affordable housing, good, and everything we can do to make sure that affordable housing happens, good. And if a rent advisory task force at this point in time would not be helpful toward making sure that affordable housing goes forward, then we need to make sure that staff time is used most effectively. That having been said, I did serve on the rent advisory task force, and before what looks like a disbandment formally happens, I just wanted to say that what I really appreciated about working on the rent advisory task force is that it gave what, from my perspective, was a unique opportunity for differing points of view to sit around a table and talk in a civil manner, so as to come up with what can mutually be agreed upon as solutions, not as an endpoint, but as a beginning point. From my perspective, it was a very powerful way to begin a conversation, and personally, I was liking the way the conversation progressed, and I believe that is a model that could be effective if another time and place happens to occur in which this model can be utilized. And I'm sitting here in council every other week and listening to a lot of opinions, and a lot of time, people come in with very charged opinions, and they have every right to have their charged opinion, after all, to them, it looks like their life depends on it, and maybe it does, but by the time you get to this podium with a charged opinion, it can be really difficult for somebody who has a different perspective to necessarily hear you, and then we're putting a bunch of charged opinions on five people to try and work through a lot of high energy, which sometimes is not as thought through as it could be. And again, the strategy of having people sit around a table to talk through those charged opinions, to bring it down to a human place, where instead of yelling at each other from a bunch of preconceived notions, we're listening to each other. In the limited time span in which that was happening, from my perspective, it was a rather beautiful thing to be a part of, and I sincerely hope that there is another opportunity for this city to utilize that process, because so far, as near as I can tell, it was one of the most helpful pragmatic approaches that I have personally witnessed to try and find solutions that are mutually agreeable, instead of an endless bickering that, for the most part in my view, is not helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiger. And that's all the speaker cards I have. Comments from council? Okay, I have a comment. And my comment is on priority number seven of the council priorities, and that's, that would allow staff to focus on other activities which do not necessarily involve construction of new housing developments, but rather on housing rehabilitation, acquisition, and preservation, I'm just reading directly from the staff report here, of existing naturally affordable units, including energy efficiency improvements to reduce utility costs and similar programmatic initiatives, some of which are already contained in the city's housing element. You know, I just, here, here, I definitely applaud any efforts in that direction, because it doesn't require new construction, you know, it involves rehabilitation of existing units. And I think there is, there's some future in that approach. And now, we have a whole bunch of lights, so I'll just start down the, Deirdre.
Yeah, so I, I agree with Mayor Keener, and I applaud your efforts to work on affordable housing. I appreciate your respect for the goal-setting, and I appreciate you taking a proactive approach to that, meeting with Home for All and the County Department of Housing, so thank you for that. I think these are all really good methodologies, and I agree with the city's approach on not reconvening the rent advisory task force. I think you're doing a great job without that, and I would like to keep that option open to revisit it if necessary, but until then, until you say you need it, I'll support.
Thank you. Mike O'Neil.
I just would like to, the Home for All grant, I attended a couple of those meetings down there in Belmont, and I think that is a very good choice for the city to go for that grant and conduct some educational seminars or educational meetings in town, because there's a lot of misinformation about what is quote affordable housing, like the income requirement. Now, the income could be as much as $100,000 for family income for affordable housing, the fact that they actually have less traffic and utilize their cars less than the average homeowner. There's a great book put out by the California Housing, it's Department of Housing or something up in Sacramento, about like the ten myths of affordable housing, and a lot of those are what's used against affordable housing in Pacifica. So they are myths, and I think it would be excellent for us to have the education for the citizens. I mean, we do have one, we do have one family affordable housing area, structure or complex here in Pacifica, and when I checked with the chief of police a while back, he said there has never been a call there for any sort of service other than a medical emergency at one point. So I think, I think it's great that we have education for the citizens to realize that just because you're in some sort of affordable housing doesn't mean you're a bad person. So I fully support that Home for All grant.
Thank you, Mike. Sue Degree.
I think staff's report was very reasonable, and over the last year in particular, but and beyond that for a couple of years, there's been an actually increasing amount of opportunities, ADUs, HART, just many things. So in my regular job and in this job, there's many more opportunities, so there is a groundswell of belief, I would say, and optimism. However, the number of people that need it is still overwhelming and somewhat frightening, and there are people that need things now. So HCD, we had a, I still puzzled by what happened there, and we should keep in good contact with HCD in Sacramento, because they're in charge of affordable housing, including mobile home parks, so that whole scenario was extremely puzzling, and I would like the city to keep, keep in closer contact perhaps, so we, we make up for that. That was a very strange and unfortunate loss of affordable housing.
Thank you, Sue. Sue Vowles.
I'm, I've been in favor of the rent advisory task force, because I attended several of the meetings, and I agree with Tiger. It was, it was very well laid out, people from all sides were there and represented quite well, they got along with each other, had recommendations. The Hillsburg advisory, I believe, is working in Hillsburg, and it kind of reminds people of what you should do, not what they're always going to do, but what you really should do for people. And I will revisit it later, if that's what everybody wants to do, but I was in favor of the rent control, the rent advisory, sorry. Not rent control.
Flipped the tongue there.
Was. The task force.
Thank you, Sue. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
You're in.
Okay. Deirdre.
I'll make a motion to receive the update about city staff research and efforts related to ways the city can support affordable housing initiatives, and also to make the recommendation not to reconvene the rent advisory task force, but leave the option to revisit it if necessary. Can we do that?
Okay.
That's seconded.
That's seconded. Please vote. Okay, that passes five to zero. And we'll take a break. We'll be in recess for five minutes.
Frank.
It's funny. I mean, it's, people think it's funny.
Good. We had, I had two Thanksgiving. I had one Thursday and then one Friday.
We're back in session. And we're on to item 10, which is consideration of moving the December 10th, 2018 public hearing regarding sea level rise adaptation policies to January 2019. I think the city manager has a very brief staff report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Keener. Council members, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. This item before you was requested to be put on the agenda by council member O'Neil. I'll introduce it very briefly and then I'll turn it over to council member O'Neil for further comments. The brief staff report that you do have in front of you describes the process that the sea level rise adaptation policies have undergone to date. It points to the eighteen months of work and the various public meetings and extensive outreach involved in the process. And what you have before you is, as was mentioned, council discussion and consideration of whether to stick with the December 10th council weighing in and approving the sea level rise adaptation policies. And then the staff report also describes the work that will continue into next year in terms of the rest of the local coastal plan and then bringing together the sea level rise adaptation policies incorporated into the rest of the coastal, local coastal plan for council approval later in 2019. And with those comments, I'll turn it over to council member O'Neil.
Thank you, Kevin. Basically, the reason I requested this is I have, over the past several months and past weeks, had many requests from different citizens that they think they would like to see this postponed from January 10th to another date. And they all suggested January, so that's why I put that in there. But there, I want to re, I wanted to emphasize that I do commend staff for the work they have done in this, the outreach and all the public that has attended the many meetings and hearings. I think I went to about ninety percent of them or ninety-five percent or maybe a hundred percent of them. They all kind of run together after a while. But I, it's mostly because I've had a lot of public requests for this. I know there's some people out there that are quite upset that this item is on the agenda. I, but just because you might disagree with it being on the agenda doesn't mean that another person doesn't have an opinion where it should be postponed. And that's why I requested it be put on the agenda. So let's just move forward.
Any questions from council? No. Okay. Let's move into the comments from the public. So Dominique Wardell, followed by Suzanne Moore, followed by Jim Blanchard.
I seem to always get the dubious task of being the first one on this issue. So I just wanted to say that I do commend staff. I work in a nonprofit. I understand when you're working hard on something and staff have worked really hard and people months, but I don't think it's unreasonable that we're here as a public to talk about this and to ask for a postponement. I think I had said at the Planning Commission that some of you were at, that, you know, a lot of us, this was kind of some new stuff we're still digesting and we are homeowners and would like to make sure that we have enough time to feel, understand this and to, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for it to be postponed at all. I think it's fair for us and I do commend you, but public does have a right to speak and we're here to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dominique. Suzanne Moore, followed by Jim Blanchard, followed by Jeff Guyet.
I understand the consideration to reschedule the vote on the local coastal plan from December 10th to first of the year, but I'm not in favor of this change. The current council has put the work into the plan and is the most prepared to make an informed decision. In particular, Mayor John Keener has made an effort to educate the community and he deserves to vote on the policy that personally means so much to him as it does to us all. I see no advantage to procrastinating on this vote. A local coastal plan is necessary to qualify for grants which our city desperately needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Jim Blanchard, followed by Jeff Guyet, followed by Dan Nicholas.
It's Tim Blanchard. Good evening, council.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was brought up last week, my writing's bad, so forgive me. It was brought up last week at the Planning Commission meeting that we have until late 2019 to come up with a sea level rise plan. So there is no need to rush to vote on December 10th. There was also insufficient notice to the public on sea level rise workshops. We also still don't have a clear definition of new development versus redevelopment. It was also brought up at, that Fairway Park was not supposed to be in the hazard zone or part of managed retreat by the people from ESA at the Planning Commission last week. Okay? ESA's own admission that the science was not peer reviewed, that they simply gathered existing information. Okay? Your own planning commission lied about mailing out notices to the people in Fairway Park. That didn't happen, nobody got it. We stated that at the Planning Commission meeting. You can check that, I don't, can't say tape, but anyhow, you folks tried to sneak this through and I'm told by the Planning Commission that managed retreat is no longer in the plan. However, I have a hard time believing this or trusting you now to do the right thing. And I'd like to see you table this for a vote by the new city council. And I hope somebody makes a motion and seconds it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Jeff Guyet, followed by Dan Nicholas, followed by Debbie Durham.
Hi, I'm Jeff Guyet. I live in Fairway Park neighborhood. I urge the city council to postpone sending a flawed local coastal plan to the California Coastal Commission. It simply doesn't have to happen on December 10th. The LCP is supposed to be based on the best available science, which is defined in the plan itself as peer reviewed science. But Bob Bataglia, the lead ESA engineer, told the Planning Commission just last week that the data used in ESA's reports has not been peer reviewed. That makes the data behind the report and the report itself invalid. We are told that the LCP does not use managed retreat at this time. However, the plan can be modified to include it at any time in the future. There is no provision in the LCP that would require any public input or checks for this. If managed retreat is not in the LCP, then this must be a bright line declaration and all references to it must be purged. The public hasn't even had a chance to see the final draft of the plan that is supposed to be approved and sent to the Coastal Commission on December 10th. Residents don't know for sure which policies apply to their properties. For example, Tina Wiermeister from the Planning Department claimed that the Fairway Park West neighborhood is not in a hazard zone, so none of the policies apply to us. However, none of this is written in the LCP. This needs to be clearly spelled out so it's not open to interpretation. She also admitted at the same meeting that the city has an extension from the Coastal Commission and this LCP does not have to be submitted to the Coastal Commission until December 2019. This is purely a political decision. There is no rush to approve any incomplete and flawed plan that exposes the city to expensive litigation. Another thing, the Coastal Commission recommends replacing the term new development with redevelopment. By their definition, for example, replacing the roof of a house in a coastal zone after January 1st, 1971 will be considered new development and that property is then subject to all the new plan rules. These rules include indemnifying the city against any hazards forever, re-engineering the entire property to meet the requirements for the flawed sea level rise predictions in the ESA reports, and ensuring all new development would last a hundred years through a hundred year storm. It would be irresponsible and contrary to your sworn duties as city council members to enact a plan that is knowingly flawed, incomplete, and unverified. Thank you.
Okay. Dan Nicholas, followed by Debbie Durham, followed by Laurie Goldberg.
City council and staff, good evening. Wherever you stand on the merit or merits of managed retreat, it really can't be argued that one of its primary goals is stated right there in the name, that there is a removal of communities, businesses, and infrastructure from the coast that has massive ramifications. You've proposed a plan, which I've read ad nauseam, to address the removal, not fire retreat, not earthquake retreat, and not hillslide retreat, coastal retreat. I do wonder how those retreats will be received and dealt with when they come to our city and to your homes. I'm here today to express that as proof of the plan's lack of readiness, it has already failed one of its largest communities and this thing isn't even out of the gate yet. My community is Area Four. That's what the Coastal Commission sees us as and despite our attempts to clarify, this document throws our homes and our neighborhood at no risk of sea level rise for the foreseeable future under the bus. The failure at hand begins by accepting predefined coastal zones and lumping together huge swaths of coast without proper vetting and peer reviewed science. While an attempt to partial eliminate hazard zones has been made, it has yet to give clear and specific protection to our communities. It refers to other thick and further sub-referenced documents that ultimately undo any protective language or make the decision to apply retreat rules arbitrary. We've heard that no managed retreat is in effect for our neighborhoods outside of the hazard areas. However, it's not the case. And if one actually reads this documentation, you can see that it's not the case. This is a complicated and far-reaching process and it's not ready to be voted on. You've not properly represented my home for one, my largest and most valued monetary asset. We've, when we asked to be removed from Area Four as one possible solution, we were told by the city manager, no. The maps were not written by the city and couldn't be changed, yet there we are, defining our future by our area. The attempt to supplement that by using hazard policies is weak at best and the Coastal Commission will steamroll it with abandon when it comes time to repair or enhance our homes. My request today is simple, delay the vote. Mayor Keener, thank you for your civil service. If it's one thing I've come to know about this process, coming here and fighting for my community, it's that serving the public is a real roller coaster ride. In the spirit of your service, please don't leave your city to grapple with, recall, and fix this plan. It's not there yet and worse, it's dangerous and ill-advised. Push the vote. Let us help you get the LCP to be balanced and fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Debbie Durham, Laurie Goldberg, and Claire Irvin Lee.
Thank you. I am here also to urge you to postpone the vote until after the first of the year. It is clear that the public is nowhere near ready to accept this plan, understand this plan, and to be comfortable and assured of this plan. There are so many questions and so many disagreements regarding this plan that it can't, you can't possibly vote on it next month. Take the time. I'm a labor negotiator and if I had a tentative agreement that might took back to my members and they all were, you know, raising their arms in the sky and wondering what it meant and wondering if it was a good deal and arguing about it as much as we have been doing the past six months over this plan, I would know that I either had to go back to the table, renegotiate the plan, or go back to my people and educate them on what the plan really meant. But right now, no one wants this plan because no one knows what it means. No one is confident that, that it will be what you say it will be. And there's no rush, so I don't know why there would be any hurry to vote on this plan now instead of waiting until after next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Laurie Goldberg, followed by Claire Irvin Lee, followed by Kathy Marisco.
I don't agree with the past speaker, that no one wants this plan. I think there are people who do want this plan. They want it to be voted on. There was a lot of outreach. There's been a lot of things that people have gone to about it. I know that Mayor Keener cares about all Pacificans and I want to thank him and Sue DeGruy because they care about all Pacificans. They do not have SAM-CAR money, National Association Realtor money behind them. They don't have Gina Zari that has to hold their hand and tell them what to say to be here. There's something, there's a bigger reason why people don't want this to happen. Like, why is Gina Zari here? So I, and why is Mike O'Neill, who's not a scientist, bringing this up? I know Bob Battaglia, he's a civil engineer, environmental engineer. He knows what he's talking about. He knows what he's doing. John Keener is a scientist. I don't think that anyone else on city council really is. I don't think Mike O'Neill, he's a Realtor and a bus driver or whatever, I don't think he knows what's going on with this. So I think it should be voted on. I think all the hard work that's been put into it and it should be voted on. I think there's something deeper going on because Gina Zari would not be here if there were, and I like all the laughs, but she would not be here. Why is she here? She's SAM-CAR paid. She does not live in Pacifica. I've seen her at other things that we've, she sent a thing about, well, that's not, but about rent control and about if you have rent control, it's going to bring drugs, addicts, and gangs and this and that. And yet now Mike O'Neill is telling us about affordable housing and how people have misconceptions about that, but yet we all got, homeowners got letters about renters. So why is Gina Zari here? And these people are lucky that they're even talking about it. I live in an area where all of a sudden, I have to go a different route to get homeowner's insurance because I'm supposedly in a fire zone. No one said to me, oh, you get to have goats eat the bushes on your heels or whatever. So I think these people are lucky that they even get a chance to have had, gone to meetings to have been able to express how they felt because I sure didn't get that chance from my place and a lot of other people in, in the area I live in. They're being, they have to change their homeowner's insurance. They're not going to be insured because they're supposedly in a fire hazard zone. And it wasn't the city that made up the maps. This, someone else made up the maps all of a sudden and changed the hazard zones. There's never been a fire where I live, on the back where I live and most of where I live, but yet we have to pay differently and get different homeowner's insurance and we had no choice. So I think these people are lucky that they even have had a choice. But Gina Zari and SAM-CAR or something's putting money into this. They're trying to bully the Coastal Commission, whatever.
Claire Irvin Lee, followed by Kathy Marisco, followed by Jay Crawford.
I agree with everything that Susan said. And in addition to that, I I agree with everything that Susan said, and in addition to that, I want to just point out that we elected all of you to do your jobs, and your job doesn't end a meeting or two before you're out. Sue's been here for a long time. She attends practically every public function. I don't know how she manages to do that and to hold a job and to have a life at the same time, but somehow she manages. John has been incredible. He is just... He's a scientist. He's one of these guys I will describe as all cash and no flash, really, really, really low-key, but he delivers. When we elected him, he did exactly what he said he was going to do. He has put in a tremendous amount of work on this project, and he's one of the only people who doesn't seem afraid to say managed retreat. And basically, all it is is making a plan in case Mother Nature does what she's going to do one way or the other, whether we like it or not. And we, as a community, need to have a plan, and it doesn't have to be next year. It needs to be done now. We need to have a plan in case the worst happens. We're not voting that we are for or against managed retreat. We're going to be retreating really quickly if the worst happens. We need to have a plan on how that's going to be done, and we shouldn't be messing around and delaying it. Two new people are going to be on the council who haven't had the opportunity of the tremendous amount of work that these people have done. And it sort of reminds me of... Well, I'll just leave it at that. Anyway, thank you for your time, for your efforts, and do your jobs. You're not done yet.
Kathy Marisco, followed by Jay Crawford, followed by Victor Carmichael.
Hi. My name is Kathy Marisco, and I've lived in Pacifica for 30 years. I do not live in Fairway Park. I have been to all of the Sea Level Rise meetings, and I would hope that you would vote in favor of Mike O'Neill's request to move the public hearing regarding the Sea Level Rise adaptation to January. The citizens who would be most affected have been very clear with their concerns. The questions that have not been answered is will these policies negatively affect the values of their homes, hamper their ability to purchase insurance, obtain bank loans, maintain or improve their homes, and will they be able to get permits? They've asked these questions over and over at these meetings, and the questions have not been answered, and until they are, I don't think it's fair to vote on it because those questions do need to be answered. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Jay Crawford, followed by Victor Carmichael, followed by Richard Harris.
Well, you're putting in your time tonight. My name is Jay Crawford, and my family moved here when I was a one-year-old. So that's a little bit longer than 30 years, twice as long. And my family's been present in Pacifica since 1953. You can do the math. I love this town, and one of the things I like about it is the way people pull together. But over this particular issue, there's been an awful lot of, like Tiger said, bickering, although it was on a different subject. I worked in Oakland my professional life, and I was at the Cypress structure when it collapsed during the earthquake. The Cypress structure was put up without proper planning, in my opinion. I was in the firestorm. Parts of Oakland that burned down remind me of parts of Pacifica, and it had burned down before, and it was not properly planned. I don't have any faith in the plan as it stands, even though we've backed off on managed retreat. I would like to see a little bit more time so that we can trust it. Whatever the final decision is, I do think that the people in Fairway Park, which is where I currently live, deserve a little bit more time, and I do think there's some things in the plan that need to be reevaluated. Thank you.
Victor Carmichael, followed by Richard Harris, followed by Jim Cramer.
The proposal to move the hearing on Sea Level Rise Adaptation...
Victor, can you speak into the microphone?
Yeah. The proposal to move the hearing on Sea Level Rise Adaptation Policies into the next year is infuriating. Why? It looks like a maneuver. As far as I'm concerned, real estate interests have destroyed any chances of the community working together on a solution by demonizing the concept of managed retreat and using fear of it as a rallying cry. It now appears that they want to cash in all the work that has been done so far, work mandated and paid for by the State of California to deal with a problem that all coastal communities all over the world must eventually face. I attended many long and painful community meetings in which the engineers from Environmental Science Associates patiently explained adaption options and their implications to a hostile, biased audience. It was science. It wasn't politics. They, the bulk of the audience, considered it pure politics. The atmosphere has been poisoned by lies and distortions, and has made any discussion, any reasoned discussion, impossible. The objective reality is that coastal portions of Pacifica have unfortunately been built on soft, erodible sandstone. We are already losing structures regularly, and climate change-driven sea level rise hasn't even kicked in yet. ESA had the impossible task of proposing a plan following the dictates of the Coastal Commission and, by extension, the State of California, which is requiring all coastal cities to consider the future possibility of needing to move structures eastward, out of harm's way. But they were opposed by a rabid pack of ill-informed, angry, and fearful homeowners who have been told that even long-ranged planning of such actions is tantamount to economically red-tagging their houses. These acrimonious meetings resulted in the community bobbing the city and ESA into hamstringing the final version by borrowing the concept of coastal managed retreat from any real consideration in the local coastal plan. This, in turn, we know resulted in the final version not being acceptable to the Coastal Commission, but most of the work is done. Now we have the naked cynical proposal to force off further discussion of sea level rise until the newly-elected city council members are seated to avoid involvement of a key participant in the plan thus far, Councilman Keener. I say cynical because sea level rise was never an issue in the election, at least with respect to the barrage of expensive mailings sent out each week financed for the real estate industry. No, they spent $75,000 on ugly hit pieces chock full of lies and distortions specifically aimed at bringing back, bringing down an incumbent. Very little seemed to be spent on mailing highlighting, mailings highlighting the policy positions of their candidates.
Victor, can you wrap it up?
Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Harris, followed by Jim Cramer, followed by Margaret Goodell.
Good evening, Council. Richard Harris, I am a San Francisco resident. I am here for the San Francisco Public Golf Alliance. Our focus has been on the Sharp Park Golf Course and its neighborhood. I have written several letters. The main focus has been on the cost-benefit analysis, which has systematically undervalued assets that are coastal assets that are inland from the seawalls and overvalued the beach using a $40-a-day number that is taken from Southern California. That initially was advertised as something that Coastal Commission required of the analyst. Turned out, it wasn't, and the Coastal Commission disclaimed that in their report. I've gone through this in some detail in letters that you have. I have provided to you a copy of the most recent letter that we submitted to the Planning Commission on dated November 15, which included Exhibits A and B, and you have all three of those. Ask you to look through them, the highlighted positions, and particularly at pages 2 and 3 of the November 15 letter, at page 3 of the October 2 letter, in which the issue of the cost-benefit analysis is discussed by the Planning Director. And that is a key point because it will determine whether whatever policies are made are feasible. So even though a policy may be to protect the homes, if it is not so-called economically feasible, it won't be fundable. And that's the issue that is made in these letters. That is a very key point. Another key point is the analysis that it's based on is not factual. There is no factual basis for beach attendance in Pacifica. The only factual basis that was alleged in the report was a report which the city planning department said would not be used. And I have focused on that in this letter. The final point is the city of San Francisco has made the same objection that the assets are not being recognized or valued, and that's Exhibit B. Ask you to look at those. These are serious issues that have not been addressed.
Wrap it up. Thank you. Jim Cramer, followed by Margaret Goodell, followed by Stan Zivan.
Good evening. I am disappointed by the motion to postpone the LCP Sea Level Rise discussion. I hope you will keep this important process moving forward. Here are some of my thoughts. First, the deliberations have already taken much longer than originally scheduled. This is at least partly because the staff graciously provided more meetings and opportunities for public input. Presumably, the council, the present council, has kept up at least nominally with all these deliverables, and the policy document has been available to the entire public for quite a while. I don't minimize the work involved by the council in continuing to work on this, and the issue may be discussed at more than one council meeting because it will come up under different parts of the LCP planning process, all the more reason that we get started now with these discussions. Second point, with the shift in the process to a trigger-based framework for adaptation responses rather than the more rigid, time-based approach that we started out with, many of the most controversial aspects of the adaptation plan and the final policies document have been alleviated. This is a point that seems really important to me, but it hasn't been emphasized by anybody else, to my knowledge. So that should make the process of discussions go a little more smoothly. Additionally, the omission of managed retreat from the policies for the near term will make the deliberations easier, though I'm not sure this is a well-advised decision. Third, at the recent Planning Commission meeting, at the Planning Commission meeting, city staff gave strong arguments against the vocal public demand that the December 10 council deliberations be delayed. The reasons they gave at that time emphasized the many steps still remaining in the larger LCP process, and it was suggested that council will have multiple opportunities to work on the development of the LCP. Staff also cited the deadline for completion, as already mentioned. It's been extended for us by the CCC, and now I don't think it makes sense to put ourselves in a position where we might have to ask for a further extension. I presume that the staff doesn't feel that the delay by this motion is needed. So in conclusion on this, a one- to two-month delay seems to me to be inappropriate. It's likely that the council's deliberations will be lengthy, especially because it'll come up again at future council meetings when the actual wording of the LCP revision takes place. So in that sense, it will take more than one meetings. As I said earlier, it seems to me really important to keep the process going. Maintaining the December 10 date will allow the input, the best input we can get from the existing council, and then later, when the larger LCP process is considered, the other council members will have the opportunity. I have to say, I'll run over just by seconds by saying that the concern about peer review is entirely misplaced. If you read the proposal, the CCC guidelines, as well as our award letter, the peer review refers to the science was used as the background for the local studies. It does not refer to the local studies. And so all the concern that the recent work, the science done by the consultants hasn't been peer-reviewed is a misguided criticism, I think, inappropriate in terms of the conditions of our grant. Thank you. Sorry, I ran over.
Margaret Goodell, followed by Stan Zivan, followed by Cynthia Kaufman.
Good evening, Council. Margaret Goodell, Pacifica. First, I want to thank staff and the existing council for their Herculean efforts to accomplish the impossible task of satisfying everyone. Pacifica's experience with building walls to keep out the ocean goes back to the early 80s. Those walls are now failing. Today, the IPCC report warns of increasing risks if fairly drastic actions are not taken worldwide. The congressionally mandated fourth national climate assessment released just this last Friday warns that it is very likely that some impacts, such as the effects of ice sheet disintegration on sea level rise and coastal development, will be irreversible for many thousands of years. The State of California acknowledges those risks and requires coastal communities to realistically assess them locally. Pacifica has done that with a year's, 18 months' worth of adaptation planning. We now have some possibilities to consider if we are courageous enough. We need to grow up and deal with realities, however unpleasant they may be, and however much we fear and loathe the uncertain future. The Pacifica we all love will change dramatically. Do we pretend that we can find money to build walls forever? How high? Who pays? Currently, the city staff, as directed by council, is pursuing grants to build walls and add revetments to buy us time. We need to start now and to use that time to envision a new Pacifica. The city's future depends on our courage to face uncertainties that no one likes. A Duke University professor has written, "We can plan now and retreat in a strategic and calculated fashion, or we can worry about it later and retreat in tactical disarray in response to devastating storms." In other words, we can walk away methodically, or we can flee in panic. The adaptation plan and policies provide us with much necessary information. Please do not delay further and postpone consideration of the policies. We need to stop dithering. We need to use the information we have, and we need to get to work. Thank you.
Stan Zivan, followed by Cynthia Kaufman, followed by Carolyn Yaramiro.
Hi, Stan Zivan. I also would like to thank the city for the incredible job they're doing in keeping this LCP process moving forward. Firstly, I'd like to say that what's happening tonight is political, and everybody in this room knows it. I'd like to ask the out-of-town, real estate-supported council people, in fact, I'd like to ask everybody in this room, how many of you have actually read the CCC comments for the final draft of Pacifica's LCP's policy? It basically told our city to go back to the previous draft because the city, at the request of the people in town who are influenced by out-of-town, real estate-backed folks, made the changes in the LCP, giving that group pretty much everything they asked for. However, much of these changes were questioned by the CCC in their comments. Furthermore, the real estate industry smear campaign mailers still wrongly accused the city of not working with them. So instead of choosing to work within the city, the REI, the real estate industry, chose I'd like to remind the real estate industry-backed council members that you have indeed won the the election and very shortly can create as much havoc as you want with our well-thought-out LCP. I'd also like to point out that the city is already looking for all the grants they can get to protect at-risk homes. What may be delayed by the real estate industry is some of the necessary infrastructure planning and possible extra costs to Pacifica citizens due to these delays, and of course, the completion itself of our LCP. So I'd like to ask the council at this time, let's have the city council finish the job they have started without political interference and with no more delay. In the next two years, we'll have plenty of time and opportunity for delay tactics and everything else you need to do to make the LCP fit into the new council's agenda. Right now, let's keep it moving forward while we can. Thank you.
Cynthia Kaufman, followed by Carolyn Yaramillo, followed by Cindy Abbott.
I too wanted to speak and say that I really oppose postponing the, the vote on the LCP. I wanted to say that, that Mayor John Keener has done an incredible job, working tirelessly for a year and a half on what's been a very thoughtful deliberative process with an incredible amount of input from the public and lots of thought, and a huge amount of backing off. I mean, there was a tremendous amount of, of opposition stirred up by, yes, the outside real estate industry, that made it such that, that the term managed retreat became so politicized and so toxic that we couldn't have an intelligent scientifically-based conversation, which is tragic. And, and therefore ESA, and I assume with the work of Mayor Keener backed off from managed retreat, came up with a plan so watered down that the coastal commission isn't happy with it. And now, my guess is that the real estate-funded new council will then try to push it back even further and have a fight with the coastal commission, which is tragic. And it's going to lose the city a huge amount of money and make it so that we're not ready when, when the next disasters happen to be able to get grant money because we don't have a valid local coastal plan. And we're going to just have a very costly fight with the coastal commission. The Union of Concerned Scientists have said that in this country, there is an over one trillion dollar real estate bubble of property which is currently overvalued because of the coming crisis of sea level rise. I really hate to think that Pacifica is going to, because it is controlled by the forces that spent seventy-five thousand dollars on nasty smear, a nasty smear campaign, is now going to be controlled by those forces that want to keep people's heads in the sand. It's tragic to me. And I really hope that you vote on this tonight to move forward in an honorable and reasonable way, and then let all hell break loose when, when the crazies take over. Thank you.
Carolyn Yaramillo, Cindy Abbott, and Robin Rooneyles.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Hiramio. I'm a homeowner, living thirty years here in Pacifica. And I'm urging you tonight to vote no on the item ten, to postpone the vote on the local coastal plan. Keep the original date set for December 10th. The public has a right to this. Mayor Keener has led the effort of many Pacificans in developing a good plan based on science and reality. To defer the vote until he is off the council seems to be a political move. It shows a lack of respect for his work and that of the other environmentalists. Thank you.
Cindy Abbott, followed by Robin Rooneyles.
Cindy Abbott, West Sharp Park resident. And first, I want to thank the Sea Level Rise Subcommittee, both Mayor Keener and Mayor Pro Tem Vodarlos, for all of the work that they put in that started over eighteen months ago. And all of the council for planning, setting a schedule, and participating in meetings on the important topic of sea level rise. And I'm asking you all to support staying with the schedule that you set, that includes a public hearing on the sea level rise adaptation policies on December 10th. The past eighteen months, and specifically since the beginning of the year, have been some of the most publicized and well-attended meetings I've seen in my twenty-two years in Pacifica. As a member of the community working group, I attended all of the community working group meetings, including when the group asked and was supported by staff and council in adding more public meetings to the process. We had six public meetings. We requested and was sent, and had sent a postcard to all addresses in the city. The meetings were publicized and connect with Pacifica. It was talked about at city council meetings. All meetings were also videotaped and available for everyone to watch at their leisure at home. And the very well-updated website that the staff kept was really to be commended with all of the postings and updates that went out. While I understand the right to request to make a change based on public comment, I hope that you'll also hear public comment that we want this plan and this schedule to move forward. And I wonder, what would change in a month's time? Would people become experts in it? Will they read the plan? What we know is that climate change is moving ahead at a faster pace than anybody expected. Even the federal administration is admitting to that. And we continue to see coastal erosion and wave overtopping here in Pacifica. The current schedule has the December 10th hearing on sea level rise adaptation policies, followed in January by more community engagement, reintroducing the entire local coastal plan, and then the general plan. We have a long way to go. We should already have a plan. We've seen erosion and damage to our infrastructure for decades. And you're right, I agree with one of our prior speakers, that your job isn't done. We want to see you all today to vote to continue with the current schedule. And for the new council that's going to be seated, to not kick this can further down the road. We need a plan. That road is getting way too short. Thanks.
Okay, Robin Rooneyles.
Robin Rooneyles, over forty-year resident in this neighborhood. I've been in before you many times on various issues in support of this neighborhood, and it's been hard to get support out of all of you up there, some of you being new and some of you not. Sue, you were very supportive in, in helping us develop a plan for Palmetto, and we're finally seeing some progress in it. And recently, the plantings have been amazing. So we are moving along. That plan originated prior to the, the effect of the economy ten years ago and going through that recession. We were delayed because of it. Money became hard to get through it. It caused the whole thing to slow down, but we're picking up again and we're slowly seeing progress. So those of you that did vote to support us, I appreciate that. I'm here to say that I feel that the residents living here in the coastal zone are asking for a postponement deserve it. They deserve to have their concerns addressed and heard in a transparent manner. And what you're hearing is that there are still many concerns. Specifically, the hazard policy statements' wordings are of great concern and they need to be looked into and addressed to these folks, to the satisfaction of the residents who will be directly affected by the result of it. Also, data and the economic analysis is flawed. It was mentioned here by an attorney that came up, associated with the golf course, and, and I have seen what was written and the analysis has gone into it, and it's of great concern. And I feel that if you go ahead and have this go-ahead with a vote on, and an address on October the tenth, on December the 10th, you're completely dismissing those concerns and ignoring the fact that that is something that is of concern and possible liability to this entire issue in the future. The process, because of the concerns brought up by the neighbors, deserves greater transparency and the additional time it takes. There is no need to do this in December. It can be addressed next year. And also, the, also the concern about the recent report that came back, a response from coastal commission staff regarding their concerns and questions about why the coastal commission is dictating, actually dictating what the process has to be coming out of Pacifica. There are many cities, as everybody has said here along the coast, that are dealing with this. But the seawall, or this levee that's out here, which is really not a seawall, is something that's on the map as something to be protected, according to San Mateo County. If you go into the sustainability report, and it talks about structures throughout the county that are enumerated in it. So I'm asking you to postpone it, to provide greater transparency to the concerns that are, that are brought up by these people here that live here at, in these coastal towns, in these areas, and on these streets close to the beach. And do something additional to make this a more valid process. And I do appreciate what we've done, up to this date. I've been in the meetings and I've heard it. So thank you for what you've done, and I hope you do the right thing again. Thanks.
That's all the speaker cards on this issue. And I'll bring it back to council. Any comments? Sue Vodarlos.
I came to the planning meeting, and there was a representative here from the coastal commission, not a coastal commissioner, but someone who works for the coastal commission. And I asked her how many cities have submitted their local coastal plan with sea level rise? She said one. San Francisco. They have different issues than we do. They're working on their inland areas for coastal, for, sorry, that's not a coastal rise, but for the sea level rise. And it's different than we are. They have a different whole neighborhood. This says that we're going to also talk about the general plan. How long has it been since we worked on the general plan? I was on the general plan steering committees, and it's been a long time since we've done any updating on our general plan. That's going to take a long time. I don't think this is a political issue at all. I think it's a neighborhood issue. I listened to the people. Tonight, it was almost exactly even, the people who want this and who don't. I came to the planning commission, when I went to the planning commission, it was all people who wanted to postpone this. The plan is nine hundred pages long. How many people have read the full nine hundred pages? There are some. I haven't read the full nine hundred pages. I skinned it. I've looked at it on and off so many times that it changes constantly. So I need time to read the full nine hundred pages. There, someone said something about the vocal public demand. There is a vocal public demand on both sides of the issue, but I heard it more heavily on the issue of people who want to postpone. No one has suggested what the valuation of the properties will be when this goes in. That is a huge deal for every person who owns a home. Not just the people in the coastal zones, everyone in this town. What's going to happen with lending? What's going to happen with insurance? What is the difference between a remodel, a redevelopment, a new property? Those questions are not answered at this time.
Deirdre Martin.
I, I agree, there are still some unanswered questions, but the, the agenda item is to consider Councilmember O'Neill's request to move the December 10th public hearing regarding sea level rise adaptation policies to a council meeting in January 2019. So, Mike, you had said that you had heard from a lot of constituents to push the meeting, but you also stated in the last, last year that you will do what you can to strip the words managed retreat from the local coastal plan. So for me, I also see that as sort of a political move. And I think that I'd like to encourage you to respect the, the process, the democratic process, that, that Councilmember O'Neill has been involved with for the last year and a half. I, and I, I feel like this is a, I feel, I feel like you're bullying us, in a way. And I, and I don't think that's okay. And, and I appreciate people coming and standing up to, to your plea to push this to the new council. That's it. That's the request, to push this to the new council. The current council is who studied it. The current council is who showed up. And I did see a lot of the future council at the sea level rise meetings, and I absolutely appreciate that, respect that, and I'm really glad, because you're going to be so much more informed. We all know what's going to happen next year regardless. So I do feel like we should have this, this discussion on December 10th. And I just want everyone out there to know that having a local coastal plan puts us first in line for any grant money. I serve on, well, as liaison for the Emergency Preparedness Commission, and we're, we've just been notified of grant money available to up to three hundred and twenty-seven million dollars for pre-disaster relief mitigation funding. We can submit up to nine subprojects. The deadline is January 31st. So do you think that we're going to be first in line for those grants? I've been on the other side of approving grants, granted for Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee at the city and county level, but the questions that are asked are, do you have a plan? Are you shovel-ready? Do you have working groups? We don't have a plan. We probably won't even be able to apply for these grants. That's millions of dollars we're throwing away. So I think we need to have this discussion on December 10th, because we all put a lot of hard work into this. This has nothing to do with managed retreat, has nothing to do with the bias that I've heard this evening. This has to do with respecting the democratic and political process. We elected, you elected John Keener to do a job. Let him do it. Thank you.
So one thing that we, going forward, because hopefully we have a long history of Pacifica and community unity, shall we say? So I think any kind of snickering, even maybe applause, should be stifled. So talking about history, so I have been here sixteen years, and when I was first brought on council, I don't know how the city managed to have money to do this, but they sent new council persons back east to the FEMA university, whatever it is. And the first thing they taught us, and we were there for a week, and they taught us the very first day, and they repeated it, and they repeated it, and they repeated it. When you're dealing with an emergency, and FEMA is going to be the one that comes in with the money, you have to have yourself ready. And you can wait five days, you're behind. You have to do it now, while you're in this eight days here. You have to be talking with your fellow, the city manager was there, Public Works was there, engineer was there. You have to start talking now, that when you get back home, you have a plan for an emergency. Didn't even say what specific emergency, but you had to have a plan so that when that emergency happened, and we know what Mother Nature can be like, it can be anything that comes tomorrow morning, then you have the paper with the signed signatures on the desk. It goes, you're first in line. I don't think it's that difficult to realize that there's only so much money, and it's taxpayer money. And where else does FEMA get its money? There's only so much money available. And if you think around in our own San Mateo County, the bayside, the bayside is an economical engine. And even though they have the Googles, et cetera, they are getting in line for money. Foster City has an erosion issue. They have just voted for a bond to help themselves. The airport wants money. That's an economic engine for the entire nation. They're going to get it. We are a coast, we're not as big as San Francisco. San Francisco's going to get money. Is little old Half Moon Bay going to be more ready than we are? Is Santa Cruz going to be more ready? And we have the Mediterranean, not the Mediterranean, excuse me, the Gulf. We have all those cities down there. We had Katrina, we had those big things, we had Sandy. We can't forget that we just had these things. So you have the New Jersey, you have the eastern coast, you have right now floods going on. That's all FEMA money. And then besides federal money, you're going to want state money. The state, it's a big state with a lot of areas, and now we have added fire. Just look at the devastation of fire and the amount of money that's going out today from FEMA, from the state of California. The pot available is getting smaller every day. So we have to pull ourselves together and say, whatever you want. You don't want managed retreat? You want whatever structures to protect your area? It's got to be paid for, and we have to be ready tomorrow to have our plan there. So the thing that draws... have our plan there. So, the thing that drives me is that. Now, as for history, I remember Supervisor Gordon, Supervisor Gordon's been out of office for a while. Supervisor Gordon called a sea level rise meeting in Half Moon Bay, let's say it's six years ago. I went to that sea level rise meeting, and one of our other supervisors was there. It was a fantastic meeting. I think it was the fishermen and the agriculture that really pushed for that one. It was an awesome meeting. You could even find the video, because I asked, is this thing videoed? Then I went up and I asked him and the other supervisor was there, what about us? What about the coast? What about Pacifica? I wasn't even thinking of the bay. They go, oh yeah, we will, we will. And then a few months later, Senator Pine brought something up, and that was supposed to like cover it. Well, being a little coasty, I go like, oh, wait a minute, I'm not so sure. He's not a coast guy. He's the Bayside. But he's a nice guy and I'm sure he's going to think about this. So, Senator, not Senator, but Supervisor Pine had a big meeting. And he only, only so many representatives from each city was allowed to come. And you could bring a few, what are we, constituents. So, I was there and our staff was there. I think it was Van and I don't know who else. And fortunately, we were small voice. We're not the big Bayside. There was, I was there, Half Moon Bay was there. That was it. So, made it a big deal, however, I have to say, even though we were smaller numbers, we were, we were loud that coastside needed planning. And so Senator, Supervisor Pine really does, I think, give it a fair shot. However, I don't know about you, but I still feel very, very nervous about the fact that we as coastiders don't have more going for us as advocacy. And I'll come back to that again. You do need to make every minute to have that plan ready now. The other thing, in 2010, wasn't that 2010? Was it 14? When did, when did we lose over here, the terrible erosion? So, we had all the, the big electives come, but the one that got me was, I got a phone call from Mayor Lee. Mayor Lee, you know, is a Public Works and engineer guy. Mayor Lee called me on the phone. I rarely answer my phone because I'm usually at work. So, when I listened to the answering machine, he said, Mayor, I want to do what I can to help you. I don't know what I can do to help the city of Pacifica, but I'm willing to do it. You can bet that I called immediately. And so, Mayor Lee came here and sat with our staff, our city manager, Van O'Camp, our engineers, our police officers. And he said, I want to do whatever I can to help you. So, at that meeting, we started a conversation with the city of Pacifica regarding what they could do to help us regarding disasters. And that included sea level rise, flooding, king tides, the whole thing. We talked about sand, being able to use the sand. What are you doing in San Francisco that you can teach us to do? Don't forget the golf course. That's your property there. You know, you've, you need to keep it pumped because we'll flood. He was all ears, and we had a great relationship. We were going to reconnect when unfortunately he passed away. So, I've made another step to connect with Mayor Breed, and I believe the city manager will be going on with that. So, so I've been there. The history here is long. This is not the first time. And it, and it didn't affect your, your insurance. In fact, if anything, it's showing that the city cares about you. In this council, in the last six months, we have said publicly at the goal setting in this meeting, our number one priority is to protect the safety of our residents and to protect your assets. We've said that over and over and over again. So, am I to hear you say that you think we're a bunch of liars, or some of us are a bunch of liars, and we don't give a damn about your place? I'm sorry. You may think that. But when I heard that the concern was that managed retreat would affect maybe a perception of people who wanted to invest in your properties, I go, hey, you're right. Maybe somebody who wants to invest might give you a problem about that. So, I had no problem with saying, hey, take it out of the tool chest for now. So, I don't know, do you want to scoff at that? I'm talking about integrity and honesty. I don't think my track record for being there for people, starting with that meeting down in Half Moon Bay, to protect our coastline, it's very concerning to me. I want to respect all people who bothered to run for office, who got in office and have been in office for this city, who's gone through hell and high water, as well as wonderful times. I want to respect that community involvement. We come from you. I was over there on your side at one time saying, what is all this talking for three minutes at the podium? What the heck do they do with that? I found out. I could write a book. But anyway, so, I would like to have our present council, who has done a lot of hard work and listening, to have the right to take all that knowledge and time to use it to the very last minute. That's, that's a community thing. I mean, we will make a decision here, but if you're going to work and we're going to work as a community, we have to stop some of this bickering or assuming that the other side is a rotten group and they have, they don't want to listen, they don't want to work together. It's our city. It's nobody else's city. We're going to do this. We should be able to argue with each other and still move. And so, do I not trust the following newcomers? I'm almost happy. I can think of how hard it is to sit up here sometimes and the amount of work that's going to have to be done. I think, wow, I get to see you work now and I get to be over there. And I'm ready to help in all ways that I can. But I think both councils deserve respect. And you, the community, deserve respect. Those of us that sit up here, we're not trained in some university or picked out like some king or queen to sit here. We bothered to run, maybe we were crazy, but we bothered to run and we got here. And so is the next community. It's on us to get through the thick and thin. And I'll say that for being 16 years, getting through thick and thin, I've been in all kinds of combinations of councils, it's because of you, the public. The trust I put in you because you do speak up, because you do care, I count on that to enable me to make a sane, as rational, fair a decision as possible. I want to hear all sides. I think I speak for everybody sitting up here and the new council, that when it comes down to the nitty gritty, this task is too doggone hard for one or five people to do it alone. We need you. We need you to continue to speak. We need you to continue to complain. We need you to continue to praise. We need you to continue to look at each other and talk. If you get loud voices, fine. Snippy, snarly, oh, please preserve us. And our staff, staff works so, so hard. It is a worry, we talk about it in our legislative circles. Will our communities be able to continue? Will we have really good people step forward to be city managers, to be planners? They don't get paid that much, as we say, they get paid a lot. But will people step here? And will there be more of you who will step forward? Or will you be turned off by the snickering and the bickering and the money and the this and the that? We don't have time for that, people. We need to get on it together. And what I really liked was somebody came by me one day and said to me, I can't stand what you're doing. He was really mad. And he walked away and he turned around and he came back and he says, you know, I don't agree with you still, but I'm sorry that I spoke to you in that manner. I never forgot that. That was one of my first weeks 16 years ago. I treasure that person as an example of who we are and what we can be. So, I beg of you, I am encouraging that we continue, that we continue interacting with you and the staff, and that we do, take what we've learned and can think about, and that we honor you, trust us to do something, yes, on December 10th. And with that, there's a package for the new group to take it and have a foundation to work with, chisel away, add to, whatever, that the new people have time to, and then we've seen them. They're studying. This is good. They have started because they might have won. They might or not have won. They could have said, hey, I'll figure it out when I get there. And also that staff has the time. Staff now has the time to work. Let's make sure they get work to do. We pay them, they want to do things. I would say we're very lucky as a city. We have wonderful staff people. So, can we throw away the negative, they're doing things behind closed doors. They're not being transparent. I think it's great that you bring it up and that you worry about it because we need to worry about it. But let's move on. I think I'm asking you for the respect for the five of us and for the respect of the others coming behind us. Can we just get going, please?
Thank you, Sue.
Need a motion?
No, I've got a few things to say. So, first of all, this vote, whenever it will take place, is a vote on the hazard policies. It's not 900 pages. It's probably 30 pages, something like that. It doesn't contain managed retreat. This is the language that will be inserted into the LCP. And then the rest of the LCP will be massaged, that's putting it mildly, before it gets to a final resolution and gets the whole business sent to the Coastal Commission. I agree with, with Sue and Deirdre in that I think staff has done a really hard job. They have, it's, it's been a lot harder than, than anybody thought at the beginning. And especially Bonnie O'Connor deserves a tremendous amount of credit. There were six public meetings. I think at this point, people's minds probably aren't going to change. We're not likely to get further resolution on this. So, I want everybody to recognize that the vote on the hazard policies is just another step toward getting the LCP finalized, which will hopefully come sometime next year. But, the vote on the, on the hazard policies, you know, if it, if it occurs this year, with this council, can be reversed, modified, whatever, by the next council. And I, I won't have any hand in that. I'll just, I'm just going to have to watch that. And I think finally, I'd like to just reiterate something that Sue said, and that is that both councils, this council and the next council, deserve respect. It is hard to run, and it's even harder to serve, believe me. So, I think it's pretty evident that there are three votes against this request to move the December 10th public hearing to January. And I think that's where we'll leave it.
I'll make a motion. You want, we have one more person to speak.
Mike O'Neill.
I just wanted to say and echo what everybody else said up here. I do appreciate all the work staff did. I think they did a very difficult, charted a course through some very difficult seas, no pundit intended. I think it is important, and I wanted to bring it up because people wanted this brought up and to see if it could be postponed. So, the vote will be the vote, and I did what I did. So, I'm not, you want me to make a motion, I guess, here? Proposed action, consider Councilmembers O'Neill's request to move the December 10th, 2018 public hearing regarding sea level rise adaption policies to a council meeting in January 2019. Do I need a second for a vote?
Second.
Okay.
A no means you don't do it.
No means it stays as is.
Right. It's, so, it's three to two against. So, we will have the public hearing on sea level rise adaptation policies on December 10th.
Yes, two more items. The fire truck and Kevin's contract. The fire truck shouldn't be controversial. Yeah. The fire truck should not be controversial.
How much time we have left? Got half an hour left. And, half an hour left, do you think we can finish?
Ready? Who's giving the update? Who's giving the update? Lorenzo? Get him out here.
Okay, on to the next item. The financing agreement for the city's purchase of a new fire engine.
I don't see Lorenzo.
Assistant City Manager Hines is going to be introducing this item, and we are looking for him. Perhaps he's in the, is he on the fire truck, maybe? There he is.
That's a first.
I was thinking, well, geez, what are we going to do? Jump onto the next thing?
He's here.
Yeah, I know.
Went out for a break. Fresh air, right?
Okay, item 10, consideration, oh, no, 11. Item 11. We finished with item 10. Financing agreement for the city's purchase of a new fire engine. Staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Pacifica City Council, Lorenzo Hines, once again, and the 1819 adopted budget contained an appropriation of $70,000 annually for the funding of a new fire engine for the city of Pacifica. On July 5th, 2018, North County Fire submitted a final pricing for a fire engine that is being purchased for the city. Total engine cost after discounts were $602,083. The expenditure was paid out of Fund 72, it was our motor pool replacement fund. And this financing agreement that you see before you reimburses the fund and allows us to extend the payment for this engine over seven years. And we've done some research, and we came up with what we believe is an optimum deal. And so, what we're proposing is that you authorize the city manager to sign an agreement to finance the city's purchase of the new fire engine over seven years. And the way this deal will be structured is that we will use $102,000 of funds that are set aside for the for the replacement of fire engines and that we only need to finance $500,000 even. And we were able to find a seven-year deal from Opus Bank at 3.43%, which is the lowest APR that, of the four entities that I looked at. And so, we're going to finance $500,000. The total interest in this deal will be about $569,547. And the proposal above represents the lowest interest rate and lowest prepayment avoidance costs of the proposals received. And we ask for your authorization.
Sue, agree.
How long do these engines last?
Good question.
Well, in our, in my experience with this now being my third city, they will last anywhere between seven and 10 years. No, I just know a lot of firefighters.
Okay. Any other questions?
No. I appreciate you looking into all of the best resources of our city funds. And I appreciated your creative ideas to borrow from the motor pool and then finance later. Congratulations on finding a good deal.
Yes.
And I'm supportive of this.
Thank you.
Yeah. Sue, vada los.
And the fact that we shared, we jointly purchased because joint purchases make a huge difference in what they gave us in value. So, otherwise, we would have paid a lot more money for this fire apparatus than we did. At first, when I looked at the letter, it said 650, but it does say up to 650, so.
Right, right.
I get that.
Yeah. Do I have a motion?
Public hearing, no?
There's no speaker cards. Okay, fill out a speaker card after you're done.
Haven't researched any of this, but I'm very curious why a fire engine only lasts seven, seven to 10 years? And why we are at this time in need of a new fire engine? Those are the questions that go through my mind.
Okay. Lorenzo, to the best of your ability.
I think that's more of a question for Chief Myers. As far as...
I do, too.
As far as the why, I believe our current fire engines are seven or eight years old. And what fire does is when they replace an engine, that engine doesn't necessarily go away. It goes into the sort of the, what they call that, sort of the second line.
Yeah.
And so, they put the brand-new engines up front in the station. The older engine will stay sort of in that second tier position and that one's ready to go out as well. What eventually is being replaced is most likely a much older engine, which is probably in excess of 10 years old. And so, this allows them to keep the rotation fresh. And so, if you visit any one of our fire stations, there'll be a new one and there'll be a slightly older one there in the station. And that's just the way they rotate their engines.
And I'll add to that, that I think in Pacifica's frugality, you know, we have run engines much longer than their recommended life. I believe the engine that's being replaced, and we can come back to the, you know, council and provide the actual numbers. But I believe that engine is more in the 15- to 20-year range that this one is replacing.
I think so, too. Yes. Okay. Deirdre Martin.
Yeah, I actually think we had a report on that. It may not have given the exact years, but Lauderdale, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I always call him Sergeant.
Yeah, no, Deputy Chief Lauderdale.
Deputy Chief Lauderdale and, and who's the other guy?
Chief Myers.
No, not Chief Myers. Up the mustache.
Pompik.
Might be, DC Pompik.
That's right. So, they were, they really gave us a good background on the history of the engines. And I can say that I've been to the fire station quite a bit with my kids. And they are pretty old. And they look really nice and new to us because we're not used to seeing them up close or they're such a novelty for us. But they're pretty, they're pretty old and they don't, there's so many new bells and whistles that we need. And they, the newest one becomes the next in line, you know? So, then eventually they get retired and go into the graveyard. But the second one, you know, the one that we're using right now is not going to be retired. It'll just go to the next person down, so.
Like when you buy a car and you pass it to your kid.
Right, right.
Sue, vada los. Good.
I'm going to make a motion, move to authorize the city manager to sign an agreement to finance the city's purchase of a new fire engine over a term of seven years.
And Sue, second? Please vote. And that passes five to zero. Okay. Yeah, we've got it. So, the final item is consideration of an amendment to the employment agreement between the city and Kevin Woodhouse, the city manager. And so, I think the city attorney has a staff report for us.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city and the city manager, Kevin Woodhouse, entered into an employment agreement back in September of 2017 for employment as the city's city manager. And the terms and conditions of that employment agreement provided for an annual review and then resulting out of that annual review, if warranted, a salary increase or other increase in benefits. A performance evaluation was performed earlier this fall. And the council did direct me to prepare a First Amendment to that employment agreement based on the hard work and Mr. Woodhouse's dedicated service to the city and asked that the annual base salary for the city manager be increased by 2% to $224,400. And that he be provided a one-time lump sum merit payment in the amount of $4,488 and also a 2% increase in the health insurance cap. The total fiscal impact of these increases and merit raises are $8,888 in total with $7,600 being paid out this fiscal year, which can be covered under the existing current city manager's office budget. We are, I'm currently asking that you make a motion to approve the attached resolution, which would approve the First Amendment with all of these amendments in his employment agreement. And I'm available for any questions.
Okay. So, city council did a performance evaluation of the city manager. I won't go into detail, but it was very favorable. And, you know, I think speaking for everybody, we think he's done a great job and we want to encourage him to stick around. At the, at the, leading up to the performance evaluation and afterwards to the negotiation of the First Amendment to the employment agreement, the city manager indicated that he wanted no more than what everybody else got this year. That is, 2%. And so, that's, that's the basis for that number. And, okay, so I think I'll leave it there. And Sue, vada los.
I was going to make a motion.
Okay.
Public comment.
Oh, sorry.
There's, again, there's no, no public comment? I don't see any? Okay.
By motion, approve the resolution approving the First Amendment to the employment agreement between the city of Pacifica and Kevin Woodhouse.
And Sue, second? And please vote. And that passes five to zero. And we've come to the end of the agenda. So, we adjourn.